Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott.
I will say the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. It will stay our daily prayer. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roque.
Mayor Proctor, Ricky Gonsalas.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Markcott.
Here.
Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Doll.
Here.
Thank you.
Item one, public comment. Do you have any comment cards? Seeing none, that's the time that I ask you to put your phones on vibrate or silent. And we'll move on to item two A.
Acceptance of the minutes, regular meeting of April 2nd, 2024, which were published on April 10th, 2024.
I need a motion.
To move second.
To move by Mayor Proctor, Ricky Gonsalas with a second by Councilmember Marlon Lewis. Is there any discussion of our regular meeting of April the 2nd of the minutes? Hearing seen none, then I ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Item three A.
Warren White to announce his candidacy for new Iberia City Councilman representing District Two.
My name is Warren White. I come and announce my candidacy running for councilman for the council, District Two. And I've come up before the council and the community. They know I'll be out there running for this district because I know Marlon is termed out. That's a good one. That's it. And then I want to thank my family for coming out and supporting me, who always support me on everything I do. If you can't vote for me, pray for me.
Item three B.
Dean and Catherine Watney to announce the 2024 Bayou Side Run as well as Mental Health Awareness Month.
Hi, it's that time of year. We're here again. So, May is the month of mental health awareness. And so, in connection with that, we always try to appear before y'all to remind the public of the importance of good mental health. It affects everyone. There are a lot of stresses out there and it affects some people more than others. And this run is a way to raise that awareness and to help hopefully erase the stigma of seeking help when needed. So, our Bayou Side Run is coming up May 4th, Saturday, at 8:00. And so, it's, you know, easy to remember, may the 4th be with you, right? So, and along with you are other people running in support of others and running by someone's side in support of mental health. So, it's been a good experience for us. This will be the fourth year. The city has partnered with us and has been very supportive. And you all need to know about how well the mayor's office and the Department's Recreation Department, Police Department have done in connection with this race. They've been fantastic and so cooperative. So, we're going to start at the Steamboat Warehouse and run through the city and end up back behind the Steamboat Warehouse again. There'll be, this is an event as well as a run. And some of you, Ricky's running it. He's had a good time. And we want to thank not only the city, but some of the city council members who have supported this cause as well. So, it's an event. There are people who walk with others by their side in recognition perhaps of someone who may have had mental health issues or a family member that may have had those issues. So, we have some food and entertainment. We all have a Cajun band. And like I said, it's an event. It's not just a race. We hope to have, last year we had over 400 registered. We hope to have a good number this year. It's a lot of fun. Just come out and cheer them on. I think we're going to have cheerleaders even this time when you cross the finish line, Ricky. So, hopefully, we'll have a good weather and good participation. And you all are invited to come out and participate or to support others. Catherine wants to tell you a little bit about what we're doing with some of the funds that we raised from the race.
Yes. One thing we did during the holidays was to have digital billboards that reminded people to have a mentally healthy holiday. Of course, everybody knows how stressful that time of the year is. So, that was just a reminder that we had on billboards. Another project we are into is a buddy bench and for the schools. And we have three benches placed at schools in Iberia. One at Johnston Hopkins, one at North Lewis, and one at Highland. And the teachers will be in-serviced on the meeting of the buddy bench and how to explain its purpose to the students. And what it will be, will be a place where a child, if they're feeling lonely and left out, they can go sit on the bench and others will know to come and engage them and have them join in their activities. And it'll be good for combating loneliness and isolation in the child. And it'll also be good in teaching students about empathy for others. So, we have those three. We're hoping with more profits and donations and sponsorships to have enough to put more benches at other schools. But that's what we're working on. And we have plans for another program in early fall for the community. So, we appreciate all your support. We appreciate the city's support in the past three years. And we look forward to seeing everybody on Saturday, May 4th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you all do. Y'all have been tirelessly working, you know, toward this mental health initiative. And we thank you for that. Good.
It's also a fun event.
Yeah. All right, item three C.
Doc Mitchell to address the council regarding the National Day of Prayer.
Good evening, council. Thank you again. It's been a while since I've been before you. Hopefully, it's starting another run, another good run in some things. I want to present two events to you and mention a third. First of all, you do have folders with flyers in it. And you'll probably see that you have some clip flyers asking that you would, you know, give those out to some constituents, et cetera. But let me, let me go through just the first one. We're talking about the National Day of Prayer. National Day of Prayer that is coming up on May 2nd, May 2nd. The National Day of Prayer, which will be at the Steamboat Pavilion. And we begin at noon. Want to mention that Highland Baptist is, as they do every year, do the prayer breakfast at 7:00 a.m. And you all invited. We, we being the Iberia Christian Ministerial Federation, do the noon prayer. And so, I want to say a little bit more about that before I get down. Secondly, on May the 18th, May the 18th, we're doing an event that is an international event, but in this country, it, it has the whole country. It's a March for Jesus. It's a March for Jesus. And it's, as I said, it was, it's an international event. But at 10:00, the march will start. It'll start on Main Street up near Tareta Village and go down Main Street and make a right on Bridge Street and then make a right on Marie Street and come into City Park. This event is celebrated in all the time zones. So, everybody has a time of 10:00 a.m. Of course, so when we begin ours, the eastern time zone have completed there. So, this is going to be an event that is going to be tremendous. When you get on the site, it'll be hard pressed for you to find another location in Louisiana that does this. New Iberia is the only event that's listed. And you have to register. It's totally formal. You have to register. But New Iberia is the only city that we know of that is doing it in Louisiana. Hopefully, before that time, someone else will be. And then, thirdly, we have what's come, something coming for our families. It's a conference on the 11th of May. It's called Kingdom Family Matters. And it's focused on, on really helping the family in various different stages, whether it's children, youth, young adults. It's, and it comes to us from St. Mary Parish. We went down and shared with them. So, now they're coming in to share with us. And it is a tremendous blessing for the community. And so, we, we are encouraging you to be a part of that. May 11th from 9:00 to 3:00, there at the Slimmin Theater. Let me, just before I go to take my seat, I want to say this about the National Day of Prayer and prayer in general. Many people feel as though that when you've prayed about a situation, well, you know, it's done. But what if you're looking for a yes from God and the answer from God is no? What do you do then? And so, I want to dispel that. And I want to dispel this, this sense of prayer in our city. Many people have said, you spiritual leaders and pastors, you're on the ground. We need you on the ground. But we don't need the pastors because things are still happening. Things are going to happen because our prayer is not focused on the things stopping. Our prayer is focused on the people, on the people. And so, that's, that's what we focus on. There's been a lot of ill statements said about that. And just wanted to, as President of the Iberia Christian Ministerial Federation, to allow you to know that we are still on the ground praying and doing those things that change the mindset, change the culture in our city. Because that has to happen. And I really want to thank the mayor as well as the council because they do support us in all that we do. If you don't see a change, trust me, there is an atmosphere of spiritual happenings that we can't see with our eye. And the only way that we can impact that is spiritual. Last thing, many say it takes a village to raise a child. I say to you, yeah, it does. But the village has to cooperate. It takes the spiritual leaders. It takes the political leaders. And it takes the community to do so. And that's what we are encouraging, participation, collaboration, and coming on board to make this city what it really, really is. Thank you. I so appreciate you. We pray for you and stay in the game and stay the course.
Madam Clerk, three D.
Sheriff Tommy Romero to discuss the parish-wide law enforcement district proposition to be considered by voters on the April 28th, 2024 ballot.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you all. Thank the council for allowing me to have maybe a few minutes so I can kind of explain why I'm here to talk to you this evening. Mr. Lewis, I didn't know you were term limited. Well, anyway, you don't have to worry about opposition, right? Okay. All right. In 2019, I ran for sheriff. I wanted to win the seat for sheriff so that I could bring some change to the image of the Iberia Parish Sheriff's Office. If you have not been to our new facility at 4701 West Admiral Dawg Drive, you're doing yourself an injustice. You need to go take a look at it. It spews and spells out and really lightens the area up with true professionalism. You need to come pass by and take a look at the new building. Want to thank parish council for helping us get that building, security building. It gives me a better opportunity to work out of a better facility. The men and women of the Iberia Parish Sheriff's Office, thank them as well. Besides the new building, we, I wanted to go ahead and make sure that all my patrol officers and employees at the sheriff's office had the right equipment. And some of that, some of that equipment is an updated comms communication system that we just recently installed. Thanks to our legislators who came back with the 375,000 allowed us to install this new communication system that allows us also to expand and add on more radios and more communication as the office grows. We've introduced Jail Core. It's a handheld device that cuts liability issues with our jailers making their rounds and not being tardy at checking cell blocks, checking on inmates. This really holds them accountable for what they're doing within the jail. And it also saves us a lot of money with regards to paper logs. This is all cloud-based. Where the cloud is, I have no idea. They tell me it's up there in the cloud. I believe what they're telling me. So, anyhow, we've also refurbished the command post. It needed a little TLC. We did that. We got it up and running. The first time we took it out for a call that came out was the train derailment that just happened not long ago. It gave us the opportunity to set up a command center. It also allowed the train company and the cleanup crew to have a location that everyone could meet and strategize. Drones was another issue that I wanted to address. I wanted to make sure that the officers in the city and the parish had drone accessibility. The drones were very important in analyzing aerial view of the train derailment before we deployed people for cleanup efforts. So, we utilized the drones on a, on a needed basis with regards to lost children, search and rescue, you name it. We pursue the people. We could have fleers that operate off the drones. Your sheriff's office has made 70,000 calls since 2020. Those 70,000 calls were, they range from barking chickens. We have those calls. It makes you wonder what these people kind of smoke out there. But there's some barking chickens to alarms, people pulling on corridors in the middle of the night, trying to steal guns, your belongings, all the way up to homicides. And the reason why I'm getting into this is to let you know what kind of professional officers you have working here in Iberia Parish. Your patrol officers responded to 13 homicides that we had out in the parish. Those 13 homicides were one in 2020, one in 2021, three in 2022. And in 2023, we had eight. So, that's a total of 13. Out of the 13, 12 were cleared by arrests. And what happens is your patrol officers respond to the scene. They take control of the scene. They make the scene safe. Our detective division comes out. They process the evidence, photograph, submit, write up the report, do interviews, make the arrests. That, that all has to be done by some professionals. Because if you leave something out, the district attorney doesn't have what he needs to prosecute and get a firm conviction on someone. So, we have a good outstanding record. So, I had the opportunity to serve under Governor Jeff Landry to select the next Colonel for Louisiana State Police. I had an inside view as to where they're heading as their organization is going to be beefed up with manpower because they're shorthanded. The view I see is the reason why I'm here. Since 2020, I've lost 20 employees. The 20 employees that I've lost range from corrections officers, patrol officers, detectives, a couple in the civil department. In, in the search and rescue area, we kind of shorthanded a couple of people. Had to move some people around. But we had 20. Each one of those 20 people I personally interviewed, they were leaving for higher pay in the public, in the private sector and to other law enforcement agencies. So, I did a study. Louisiana State Police is at $54,000 start pay. I'm going to go with start pay. The St. Martin Sheriff's Office is at $46,000 start pay. And I rounded these numbers off for you so we can kind of all keep up and understand. $45,000 for Lafayette Sheriff's Office. $40,000, $42,000 for Vermillion Sheriff's Office. $40,000 for Broussard in Youngsville, which is right down the road. However, last week I found out from the chief in Broussard, they're going to up their salary by $5,000. So, they're up to $45,000. I'm embarrassed to tell you the Iberia Parish Sheriff's Department is at 34,935,000. We're losing our people, our well-trained officers to other agencies because of pay. So, I am asking for a quarter cent dedicated sales tax for our salaries and benefits. Now, to hire these people, I have to have funds available to do my human resource stuff. We have to do background investigation. That's outside of the salary and benefit. We have to do a drug test. We have to do a background test. We have to do background investigation on somebody that puts their application with the sheriff's office. We do a thorough job with regards to that individual who's applying. I need to have a group of people in the application pool that want to put or want to come to work in the sheriff's office. When they see the salary that start pay is, they don't put their application. I'm short in that area. And I'm not going to lower my standards for becoming a police officer. You have to, you have to meet the standards. The only way I can do getting that pool brought up is to offer a better pay. So, the, the tax is going to be a perpetual tax, which is not going to come off the books. Because I believe Iberia Parish is heading in the right direction. I want to keep us moving in the right direction. It's imperative that we don't change course. I, I know that our officers do a dangerous job. We all know it's hard to get police officers into this field. But they're not going to come at that salary. I can promise you. We're going to end up losing more people because I know the, the salary is going to go up. I would imagine they're going to probably tweak some salaries over in Vermillion. There's a new sheriff there. So, state police are going to hire on those people. And those, if those vacancies come available at another agency, I'm going to lose people to them as well, as well as maybe state police. So, I know Iberia is not keen on taxes. I understand that. Supporting the tax will do something, I think, my personal opinion, is businesses are going to want to come to Iberia, the Iberia, because they see that the public is behind their law enforcement personnel. They're behind them. It sends a message to the criminal element that, hey, the people in Iberia, they like the police. You might, you might think before we do anything. And it sends a message to the deputies and the men and women of the sheriff's office that you'll care about them and that they will be grateful for this pay increase that I can give them. Not supporting the tax is going to send a message to businesses again. Hey, that, that parish doesn't care about their law enforcement. I don't think we want to set up business there. The criminal element is going to be, hey, the public's not behind law enforcement. I think we can do what we want. I don't particularly care for that. And it sends a message to the men and women of the sheriff's office. The people don't care about us. We need to go make our money somewhere else. And I'm afraid we can have some people that leave the office behind that and will be extremely shorthanded. So, I'm asking for the support. If you can find it in your hearts to help these men and women out who put their life on the line, they put a badge on every day, they can get shot on at any minute, they handle drug, fentanyl issues, they could die from that. It's a dangerous world we live in. And I know we don't want to be short in, in manpower with regards to law enforcement altogether, in the city as well as out in the parish. The wolf is going to be at the back door soon. Because I'm telling you, the border is open. We don't know who's coming in. And that fentanyl drug is starting to pop up its head over here in Iberia Parish. And I, I really want to handle this issue. If you go back in the paper and look how many arrests we've made with regards to drugs and guns, it's still on the street. We're still making effective arrests. So, if there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer a question.
Questions, comments?
Well, I mean.
Yes, sir.
Just, I know we have a police department, a city police department. Man, what, how much does our city police, what's the annual starting salary?
Forty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four.
Forty-one thousand.
I knew that would come up.
I mean, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a fair, it's a fair question.
I had thirty-one five. I didn't mention the PD.
It's a fair question.
Yes, sir.
I know, I know all over the, so what is our sales tax? Ricky, Dan, I know y'all know, y'all keep up with sales taxes and millages. I've been watching out for years. What is, what are, where we at on sales tax in, in the parish again? I don't know off the top of my head.
Right now, we pay nine and three quarters.
Nine and three quarters?
So, it'd be ten.
That one would bring us to ten?
Ten and a quarter in the city, huh?
Yeah.
Ten and a quarter in the city. That's before any taxes are paid.
That's right. That's right.
And traditionally.
To clear one thing up, we don't get the ten and a quarter.
No.
If you remember.
Some people think we get all the money.
The state takes their cut by the time it widows down, the school board, you know, all of that comes out of that. And traditionally, in the city, our sales taxes are high, our millages are low. Every government's different. Every government structures theirselves a little differently or just ends up over time and over growth of things changing. But the way we've been set up is, and it's been that way for a long time, that our sales taxes are higher, millages are lower. And now, when you compare us to Youngsville, Broussard and other communities, their taxes and millages combined are higher than us.
Correct.
It is more expensive to live there. But they have a different tax base and they have a different median income. So, it's a kind of a different world. Anyway.
And if we can explain one thing about taxes is that a millage is a property tax.
Correct.
Only people that own property pays that tax. A sales tax, everyone pays for. So, that's the difference of the two taxes.
So, if I might interject, look, I go to the grocery store. You walk out with three bags of groceries. It's $100. I'm asking for a quarter off that $100 bill for the men and women of the sheriff's office. Now, I'll go, I'm going to pay the tax if I purchase something. When you all go, you pay. When the deputy who receives the benefit from the tax, when he goes, he pays. When people come to visit our safer community, they're going to pay. When the bad guy's slinging dope out on the street, goes to the grocery store and buys stuff, he got to eat too. He pays. So, we all pay.
Well, you answered some of my questions about the, the, the tax base in Youngsville and Broussard. They're able to pay because they pay our tax, sales tax. Look, I'm not going to get up here and bash something that's going to put better people in position to serve our community. You know, I'm not going to get up here. I believe that school teachers and law enforcement should be topped with doctors and lawyers, in my opinion.
Thank you.
That's how I've, I've always felt, believe it or not. Because if you look at society's issues, if you look at it from my standpoint, I believe that because those people ain't getting paid, you know, let's just be real. That's why you got crooked cops. That's why you got teachers who don't want to teach no more because they're not getting paid enough. So, I'm not going to sit up here and try to bash somebody for feeding their family and competing with the neighboring cities. You know what I'm saying? So, my question was basically what the salary was for our police department and versus the sheriff department. Because I know, I know the sheriff department, they don't really patrol the city though, right?
Well, there's a lot of things your sheriffs provide for the city.
Okay.
Okay, I can give you some examples.
Give me some examples.
The other night, we had a crime scene that was fairly large crime scene for the city police department. We got called in to help them with that crime scene. We got called in to help them with that crime scene. We provided the outer perimeter area and we also handled calls from the city while they took care of that, that incident. We, all OPCs orders of protective custody, whether it's in the city or out in the parish. City don't handle that. The sheriff's office handles it.
And that's,
Temporary restraining orders? I'm sorry?
Men, when you say OPC and CP, yeah, I have a little brother that's menial, that's,
Your sheriff's office handles that, not the city. Uh, temporary restraining orders, same thing. We handle that. Uh, we have a working agreement with the city police department and, and I, let me just tell you, the men and women of the city police department do an outstanding job. My hat's off to them. They, they fighting the same issue. Uh, they do a great job. When we don't mind helping them whenever they need help and a lot of times when we're short, we call upon them, they help us out. We help each other out. We all wear that badge. We, uh, we provide some other services for the city. The, like I said, the OPCs and the temporary restraining orders, we do that. I think there's a, there's an issue here that a lot of people don't realize what we do. Let's say the city police department makes a felony arrest inside the city. They gotta house that person. They house them in Iberia Parish Sheriff's Jail. I gotta provide four deputies, round-the-clock care and watch and maintain security of that inmate that the city arrested. When that person goes to the courthouse to answer for his crime, it's your sheriff's office that transport that deputy to the courthouse here. And it's a sheriff's deputy that maintains security within the courthouse for that, that individual that was arrested for the city. When that person gets convicted and gets transferred to Angola, it's your sheriff's office that transports, not the city. But we don't mind doing that. We, we don't, we, we do our part for the city. There's a lot of stuff that we do that go, that goes unnoticed. And if something happens in front of my deputies in town and they're traversing through town, which they always do, they're gonna stop and address the issue. I can promise you. It won't go overlooked.
I know it's coming up April twenty-seventh, so I just wanna ask some questions that, cuz people watch this and it's coming fast. And, uh, just, I wanted to ask some questions to educate the public. You know, I'm not gonna run around, like I said, uh, trying to knock or bash anything that's gonna help people get employed and compensate for the work that they do to keep our parish safe. I'm not gonna get up here and do that. You know, I'm definitely not gonna do it by myself. You know, so, I appreciate what you've done. You have changed the image at Iberia Parish Sheriff's Department. I am coming back there to see that place, not Broken Arrow, not the one on Broken Arrow. The one on, you know.
Well, we're gonna make sure that you don't go to Broken Arrow.
No, I'm gonna make,
You can, you can come, you can come past my envision, take a look.
I will. We talked about that. I will. Thank, thank you. Thank you.
No, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, we had a few, uh, Mayor Pro Tim?
So Tommy, I admire, you know, it takes, it takes a special person to stand up here and try to fight for his people and, and try to get additional funding when you know you're up in an uphill battle. And, and I think you're doing a great job because ladies and gentlemen, you know, when you, when you put your hand on your bough as elected official, you swear to protect your citizens. And part of it is to do what's right, to fund the police department, to protect your constituents. And you can't do it without funding and you can't do it without the tools necessary. And everybody that has their own business knows what inflation is doing right now. Costs are going up. Everything's rising. Everything's rising now. You know, one thing that we, we really don't remember is that crime has no lines. It doesn't know where the city and parish boundaries are. It has no lines. So, one hand washes the other. Both entities have to work together to provide safe environments for our city and parish. And I just think it, it's an investment in our parish, a small investment in our parish. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna support it cuz I feel our, our sheriff department needs it and, uh, and it's gonna go a long way in protecting our businesses as well. I need protection in the parish. I have multi-million dollars worth of equipment, two buildings in the parish. I need protection, so I'm invested in my protection as well.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Dee Johnson-Reed, and then I saw you, I'll get you next.
Um, so I've been to the facility and it is really nice. You guys did a great job with that. Um, so, this is also for you, mayor. So, our police officers also get a state supplement, correct?
Yes.
So does the sheriff department get that same state supplement?
We get the state supplement as well. Everybody's,
Every, all law enforcement?
Okay, so,
Did this salary check without the state supplemental pay?
Right, and ours is too.
For everyone.
Yeah, and ours is too.
All the agencies.
So, so it's actually a little higher than thirty-one because they get the state supplement?
That's correct, but it's also higher for those other agencies because I left that off of the quotes I gave you.
Okay.
That's what it's actually costing us.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that, I mean, we're clear about that there is an added state supplement to the salary, so it's not thirty-one. It's, I don't know, I think I was like sixty-four hundred, I think. I can't remember, but, just to be clear. I think it's sixty-four hundred.
Yeah, and it's about the same for everybody.
Okay, alright.
And not to crosswalk talk, it's thirty-one or thirty-four? You said thirty-four annually?
For my office, that's thirty-four nine to thirty-five thousand.
Sorry, I said thirty-one. You're right. Thirty-four plus the state supplement. Okay.
That's it. Councilwoman Broussard, get your hand up.
I judge, I judge, uh, the departments, all departments, by the news. We've had a lot of years of bad news coming out of a few departments we have. You have straightened yours out, Mr. Sheriff.
Thank you.
We thank you, sir. And I see it on the news every day. You watch other departments in Opelousas and other towns, they having troubles. A lot more than we have. So we wanna thank you, sir.
Well, it's the minimum of the sheriff's office that do that job.
You know, they do their job and I think they're well-deserving of this, uh, pay increase that you're asking for.
Thank you very much.
We wanna thank you, sir, for keeping us out the news.
Thank you. Proud to stay out the news as much as I can.
Councilwoman Doll?
You know, we're lucky. In New Iberia, we have a police department in a parish, in a city that works together. We have a council in a parish, in a city that, in it, works together. We have a fire department. Every service we have, they work together. Some areas are not that way. But you know, I, um, I could never be a police officer. I got more alarms around my house than cameras. If a cat comes by, I'm, I'm making wife get up to go see what it is. But, I can tell you, I think this, this quarter sense is not even close, but it's a start. And you know what else I feel for? Is the family and the wives of these police officers when they leave. It's just, you never know. You know, and you, you can see that on the news, and I'm not saying in New Iberia, but anywhere, someone's going to see about just an argument at someone's house and the policeman gets shot. You know, it's just sad to say we're in that element now. But, um, I applaud your effort cuz it's, no one wants to pay more. But if we can get better people or more people to, to send a signal to the public, say, hey, we're not gonna mess with letting y'all come in our city or our parish. And we can stay strong behind it. I think it's a message. And I think, um, I applaud your effort and I applaud your deputies, just like the city. I mean, that's, and they go through a lot to be a police officer. You don't just go and get a badge and go, you have to go through a lot to get to that point. Yeah, I think they, they earn any penny. We can give them extra. I think we should. And thank you for doing the job and thank you for working with the city.
Well, thank you very much. And I want you to know it's protecting your investment because once we train an individual and they stay here and they got these years of experience, if they choose to go work somewhere else, I can't hardly replace all those years of experience. That's something that's not taught in an academy class. You've got to have worked on the road and handled many, many calls to have that kind of experience. And we can't afford to lose that experience to another agency because guess who reaps the benefit? They do, because they don't have to pay to have the guy trained. All that training was spent by our tax dollar. We wanna keep that home. So thank you very much. Any other questions?
Good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate you. Have a safe night.
Alright, Madam Clerk, item four A.
Ordinance number twenty-two-four dash ten and ordinance levying millages on the twenty-two-four tax rule on property subject to taxation by the city of New Iberia.
And we're proposing our tax rates would ra- would remain exactly the same. So first of all, we need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Marcott and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalana. Is there anyone from the public to comment on this item? Hearing seen none. I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Dee Johnson-Reed and Councilwoman Brooke Marcott. Thank y'all. Uh, now that's closed, I need to go back and I need a motion on the main motion.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalana and Councilwoman Brooke Marcott. Is there any discussion on the main motion? Hearing seen none. Please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Four B.
Ordinance number twenty-two-four dash eleven and ordinance authorizing the city of New Iberia, state of Louisiana, to proceed with and not to exceed sixty million dollar financing through the Louisiana Local Government Environmental Facilities and Community Development Authority and providing for other matters with respect thereto.
This is our road money and, uh, we have Jason Akers here, so we'll let him address us before we move to our business. Thank you. Evening, sir.
Very good. Uh, good evening. Jason Akers with Foley Udel. I'll be glad to comment during the, the public comment and address any questions you have, uh, afterwards as you move back into session. Uh, this is, as the mayor said, this is the final approval of the sale of the, uh, road bond, sixty million dollars. These will be paid out of the proceeds of the six-point-eight-three-mill tax. It was approved by the voters last fall. Uh, that tax will be going into effect. Uh, you just, uh, approved it in the, in the millage ordinance. Uh, so it'll start being collected at the beginning of, of next year. We are, as we discussed previously, doing this a little bit differently than other bond issues because of limitations in state law and the use of the proceeds of that tax and the desire to fund the full amount of that tax into usable bond proceeds going through an intermediary conduit called the LCDA. So this authorizes them to move forward to sell the bonds on your behalf. Uh, they will then receive the bond proceeds and loan them directly to the city. And from that point forward, it operates just like a regular old-fashioned city bond issue. It's just utilizing that additional authorization that LCDA has to enhance the value of the tax, uh, as, as you leverage it through this bond issue. Um, we are, uh, moving along. We actually had a really good conversation with S and P this morning. Uh, I gotta tell you, uh, the mayor does an excellent job in giving his stump speech for the city. Uh, the, the, the passion and, and the, the number of good things that are going on around the city and Iberia Parish in general are very evident as a result of that conversation. Um, we're optimistic to get a good rating out of that. Uh, better rating means a lower interest rate on the bonds. And so we're optimistic that'll come to fruition as well. Uh, once we get through, uh, this ordinance today, uh, we anticipate getting the rating at the beginning of the next week. We'll sell the bonds at the week, at the week following that. And then proceeds will be available to you in the latter part of May and you'll begin continuing the road program at that point. So again, I'll, I'll wait and take any comments following public, or any questions from you following, uh, the public hearing, if that's okay.
Yes, sir. So at this time, I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Councilwoman Dee Johnson-Reed and Councilwoman Brooke Marcott. Is there anyone from the public to comment on this item? Hearing seen none. I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalana and Councilwoman Brooke Marcott. Thank y'all. Now we can, do we have any questions before we adopt it? Do we have any questions or comments?
I have some questions. I guess you guys talked about this when I was in Spain.
Yeah, let's do the motion first.
Okay.
Okay, do I have a main motion?
Second.
Alright, uh, Councilman Marlon Lewis and Councilwoman Deidre Leder. Thank you very much. Now that we have the motion, we'll proceed to discussion. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, um, unfortunately I wasn't here. Um, I was doing some other city business. And, um, so, I, I see here it says something about, um, the rate is not gonna exceed seven percent. Are we, are we certain that the money that we're gonna collect from the millage is gonna cover the payments that we're gonna have to make? Or is that, are we gonna, is there a chance that it could be a shortfall?
There, there's always a chance. Um, however, the seven percent is just a not-to-exceed amount.
Right.
We anticipate it coming in much less than that.
How much?
Uh, I knew you said much less. I knew you were gonna call me on that. Yeah, so right now comparable transactions we're seeing in the four to four and a half percent range. So certainly it's higher than in twenty-one.
Right.
When we sold bonds that were in the two and a half range.
Yeah.
Um, that was a great down. This is not necessarily. But we're doing a lot better now than we were if we had tried to sell, uh, you know, tried to sell these bonds in, uh, the summer or fall of last year.
Okay.
Based on what we're seeing from the market, the, what the underwriters are telling us, what the financial advisors that you've retained have, have, uh, told us as well, it is anticipated that the amount of proceeds that the tax is going to bring in should be right about the debt service.
Yes.
There should be a very, it should be closely correlated at this time and then as your assessed value grows over the years, because these are fixed-rate bonds, you will know how much you're paying every single year. And because that assessed value is anticipated to grow eventually, that assessed, that, uh, tax proceeds, uh, each year is going to exceed the amount of the, uh, of the debt service that you'd have to pay.
Okay. So this intermediary that we're using this time versus previous time, is there a cost to?
There, there is a cost. It, it is, I would say, a de minimis cost to go through, uh, to go through the, the intermediate conduit that we would, uh, use. And, uh, it's a, it's a fixed cost as well, one-time payment upfront at closing.
Okay, alright. Okay, so when, when are we gonna know what the, the rate is? You said after something, I can't remember now.
Probably not in time for your May, first May meeting, um, but definitely the second.
Okay.
But we will certainly, uh, mayor and Laney will know the information and, and will, uh, make sure that it gets passed along.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else? Questions, comments?
No, just, just a comment, but Dee, typically when, when we do these bonds, we always have reserve funding in the bond initiative that is in reserve in case we have a small shortfall. Is that correct, Jason, typically?
Well, one of the benefits of doing, using the conduit is that we don't have to fund a reserve through this one, um, and others, we certainly, certainly have. We don't have to fund a reserve, which means more spendable proceeds available for the city as opposed to having to put that money aside and, and it stays there solely for security for bondholders. So it's kind of an inefficient use of funds. You could do a lot more with it, put it in towards road projects. Uh, however, um, you know, we're going to monitor and we're going to ensure, and if we get to a situation where, it looks like the debt service in any year would exceed the amount of taxes that are anticipated to come in, then we'll just have the conversation at that point. Do we wanna lower the borrowing, uh, principal amount a little bit just to keep it affordable? That's, we have that flexibility at this time.
Okay.
And we did this because, you know, it took, and thank, thank you to our voters, it took two tries to get this millage reallocated. And the first time, the interest rates were so low, the bar was high. We were talking about a lot more money. So as the year went by and we had to do it again, so Jason and I went back and forth and I was really struggling to, to have the most money we could put into the roads because we all know the need is there. And that's when Jason came up with the concept that we would go through the, what's the name, what's the initials?
LCDA.
Yeah. We would go through them and that allowed us to put more money, not in a reserve, but more money directly in the street because our need is so great.
No, I, I understand. I just, yeah, I, I understand about the reserve. I knew that part. I just wanted to make sure since we were doing a different process, that we understood exactly what we were doing and then how much it's gonna cost us because the voters need to know that it's their money.
Right, it is. Anybody else? Well, seeing nothing else, then, uh, I need a motion?
Motion.
Oh, we did a motion. We just need to vote. We just need to vote. Alright, sorry. Then if you don't mind, vote your machines. Thank you very much. Jason, as always, thank you.
I'll, I'll be back in a few.
Good, I appreciate it.
A few items, not,
Yes, sir. Alright, four C.
Ordinance number twenty-two-four dash twelve and ordinance establishing a procedure for the sale or transfer of ownership of a retired police dog and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Dee Johnson-Reed. Anyone from the public to talk about our doll? None? I need a motion to close the public hearing. Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalana and Councilman Marlon Lewis. Is there, uh, now I need a main motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Marcott and second by Councilwoman Dee Johnson-Reed. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing seen none. Please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Four D.
Special ordinance number twenty-two-three dash twenty-two-four dash eighteen and ordinance amending the budget to facilitate the costs related to change order number three for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one LCDBG sewer system improvements project.
Remember, this is our ninety-thousand-dollar change order for what couldn't be seen under the road. So I need a motion to open our public hearing. Councilwoman Dan Doll and Councilwoman Dee Johnson-Reed, is there any public comment on this item? Hearing seen none. I need a motion to close. Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalana and Councilman Marlon Lewis. Now I need to go to the main motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Marcott and second by Councilwoman Deidre Leder. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing seen none. Please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Now we go to resolutions. Five A.
Resolution number twenty-four dash thirty-seven, a resolution accepting the municipal water pollution prevention environmental audit report and setting action to maintain permit requirements.
This is a report that Craig puts together if there are any discrepancies or if we have any issues, and it also outlines like our future plans of maintenance to stay out of the pollution business, you know, just to make sure that we keep our system where it needs to be and we don't have any regulatory problems from like sewer losses, those kind of things. And Craig's here if we have any questions.
I do. Come up, Craig.
All right, come on up. Yeah, no, that's fine. Yeah, let's do the motion if you don't mind.
Oh, sure.
Motion.
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter and Councilwoman Deidre Johnson-Reed, thank you all very much. Yes, ma'am.
So, you know, I love reading through these things.
I bet you do. I love writing them.
So I was surprised that, I mean, on this one in particular, and I know this is all not when you took over, this is obviously before, we missed a few targets. Some of the monthly flows were actually over what we normally have. But my question was mostly around, there seemed to be some operator errors that happened where things were, I mean, are we providing enough training for our people? What was, what happened there that caused us to, this to be an issue?
So you're looking at the exceedances?
I'm on, yeah. Page five, you're correct.
So actually, yeah, all of these that happened were, on our DMRs, every month we submit, you know, every, every day during the month, we submit, or samples are collected and tested. These were the months where they had exceedances for those items listed. Like I said, this was when Vince was here, and on the DMRs, if you have exceedances that month, you typically write an explanation during the month. And these, to be honest, are just Vince's explanations.
Okay. Well, they all said due to operator error, so I'm just.
Yeah, I mean, the operators are trained. You know, some people, you can only train so much. But, you know, they have been educated, you know, after these occurrences on, you know, how to properly do what they didn't do.
Okay.
But yeah, it's, overall, it's just getting better.
And are the nitrogen levels back to normal?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Somebody else? Questions, comments?
Yeah, and just to let y'all know, so the scoring for here is kind of opposite of normal scoring. The higher the score, the worse it is.
Worse it is, right.
And looking at, you know, the summary, part three, age of the wastewater treatment facilities is the one that we're, we did the worst in, forty-two point five out of fifty.
Right.
But we are proposing, you know, to the headworks upgrade soon, which would put this value at zero next year.
Okay.
Because we have.
Those investments that are coming, remember, we're doing the rate study. We should, we were supposed to get, I hope, the results today, it got moved to Tuesday. Once we have the results of the rate study, then we can make our decision to accept the five million from the state. We also have the two point five million low interest loan, so that seven point five we'll be investing, and that'll get that score down to zero, which is.
Excellent. Okay. Let me see.
I think that's it? I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Double checking to make sure I wrote my questions on the pages.
So.
Mayor. Yes, sir.
The plant that we share with the parish.
Cotton Street.
Cotton Street. We do the report for that?
No, so Chandler, Chandler State just does the report for plant three. But if you look on the last few pages, it has plant three and plant four on both packages.
Yeah.
So under plant four, the city's plant, the part for, from the parish, the very last page, is work that they're done, they're doing that is affecting, you know, our treatment plan.
Yes.
Improvements they're saying to us, and vice versa, what's on plant three, the plant four stuff is what we're doing to their basins, basins that contribute to the other plant.
So on plant four, you say, I mean, the report says something about we have a manpower shortage? Are we still short, are we fully staffed?
No.
No.
Okay.
And in the past, Vince has had an INI, you know, kind of program that they would, each year, they would look at twenty percent of each basin and do repairs on INI. I wanna say, he said it, it costs around a million dollars to find the problems, a million to fix them.
Correct.
Which we didn't have, you know, the funds this year.
Okay.
Or the manpower, but we are working to, you know, re-implement that. And as of right now, we're kind of focusing on the problem areas throughout the city with INI, and we're trying to address the bigger issues rather than each individual house until we get a better program set up.
Okay.
And we have shortages in many of our areas. I mean, I'm not, we're talking about sewer right now, but if you look at parks, public works, it has been difficult to fill some of our spots.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
On INI, comparing to where we were when we finally got out of the decree, are we kind of keeping up with it?
We are. We can't miss too many years that we don't spend that million dollars. It's gonna have to be re-energized a little, if you will, if we are fortunate to get the five million dollars and we already have the low interest money. Once we spend that seven point five, our headworks is reworked, the new sewer plant, which is now sixteen years old, is not new anymore. So once we make those big improvements and investments, then I think we're back to where we were before of that million dollars a year to keep up. But we're not in a danger zone of slipping back into a consent decree, but I can tell you, if we go too many years that we don't continue to make those investments in our aged system, we could end up in trouble again.
What kind of condition, I'm not sure how many years it's been when we did those liners in some of the older neighborhoods.
All those liners work.
We just did one on opposite.
Yeah, we just did one.
And that still is the process we're using for that?
It's probably the best process, because it's all clay pipes.
It's still outside companies doing it, we not doing it, right?
Right, we bid it out.
We bid it out.
Yes. And still, with all those joints and all those ancient clay pipes, it's still the most effective, effective and efficient way to reliner.
And they hold it up pretty much?
Yes, yeah, the liners hold up.
Yeah.
You know, we have been kind of focusing on Tampico, you know, that area, trying to figure out where the main cause of the problem is, the, you know, larger INI areas. And we think we might be on the same page.
That's good. One of the residents reached out to me after a hard rain we had, and she was able to flush her toilets, previously was not able to. Yeah, so something is working.
We have been doing some work there, and it is getting better. We just need to know that that rate study comes back so we can grab that five million dollars. And then with that and the low interest money, we have a flow reroute and some additional work in your area that's really gonna help, more than, you know, what we've done.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Craig.
Craig, do you vote? Thanks. Okay, then I'd ask you to please vote your machines.
Just keep us flushing, Craig. Keep us flushing.
Five B.
Resolution number twenty-four dash thirty-eight, a resolution authorizing the increase of current payment standards for the city of New Iberia Section Eight program.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman David Broussard and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Johnson-Reed. And we have our director, Haley. Hi.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. You want to tell us about this?
So yes, so currently, we have, we are using a hundred percent of the fair market rent that HUD sets annually, annually as our payment standard. So the payment standards are used to calculate our housing assistance payments, and it's what the city is gonna pay out to the owner on behalf of the family. Currently, the fair market rents for our area decreased, and we're having a hard time approving some housing currently for new participants. So with us increasing it to a hundred and ten percent, we won't have that problem. And in the future, it's gonna help us get more landlords to participate in the program, and these new developments that are coming like AB Simon and some other new projects that we've heard of, I think increasing it's definitely gonna help us be able to work with those landlords.
Questions, comments? Yes, ma'am.
So do we know why they decrease it with all rents going up around the nation? I mean, it doesn't make sense.
They, I don't know. I have, I got with my HUD field rep today, actually, about it, and she was gonna look into it for me, they're out of New Orleans, but they had suggested we do this because our fair market rents went down.
Do you know, what's the percentage it went down? Do you know the percentage?
So, no.
Okay.
Well, I know that the studio or the one bedroom last year was at seven oh four, and it dropped to, oh, just dropped to six ninety. And we're trying to get the one bedroom payment standard up to seven fifty-nine.
Okay.
The payment standards include rent and utility, so it's not just rent there.
Okay. Okay, that's just odd that they would reduce it when rents are going up everywhere. It's really weird.
Well.
That's why we need to be proactive and do this.
Right, our average cost per unit for the city is five hundred. The parish is only two hundred and forty dollars per unit cost, and I think that has, that plays a part in that.
Okay. Well, they need to bump it up.
I know. So, you know, this is gonna definitely encourage more landlords.
One of the reasons that program is growing.
Yeah.
Good, good. Yes, sir.
Does that affect the amount of people who will be able to help out?
It will not. Actually, we, I brought this with me today, because I got this notification, we got awarded some additional set aside funds from HUD, two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. That's gonna be added to our HUD held funds, and I was told by my HUD rep today that, you know, the rate that we're going, we're spending more during the year, and they're sending us more money. So the more people we're putting on, you know, it shouldn't affect that.
That's excellent.
Good. Yes, sir.
So maybe, maybe that answers, but as you increase the rental rates on the program, does their participation rate go up, their cost of participation go up as well? Does it track with it?
It could. I mean, our costs that we pay to the owner could go up.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
It just depends on the family's income.
But they only require to pay like thirty percent, right?
They only, yeah, they're responsible, thirty percent of their adjusted gross income.
Yeah.
No matter what the rent is?
No matter what the rent is.
Okay. I thought, I thought maybe that tracked up as the rents got higher.
No, no.
They still just pay thirty.
Okay.
Which is good, because, I mean, thirty percent's a lot.
Anybody else?
Questions?
Questions, comments? Just keep growing our, our program.
I'm trying, this will help.
I know it will. I know it will, and you've been very successful, you know, without this, so.
You're doing a really good job.
Yep, keep it coming.
Thank you, I'm trying. Yeah, I don't like to stand in front of everybody, so.
I know, thank you. You did a good job.
Great.
Okay, that's it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? And please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Five C.
Resolution number twenty-four dash thirty-nine, a resolution accepting six-month bids for supplies.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Councilman David Broussard, Councilwoman Deidre Johnson-Reed, any discussion on this item?
One question, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I see they got a price on, on the gravel and almost all the materials here, pickup price and delivery price? Do, what we do mostly, do we pick up or deliver?
It depends on the job. When Joe's doing something small and we're gonna be waiting a long time, or we only need a few yards, then we use our dump trucks. There are times that it's a rolling thing and we are in a rhythm and using a lot of it, then we have it delivered.
Do they keep a lot at the yard?
Some, but not, not a huge amount, because, you know, sometimes it sits for a long time. We keep some, you know, because emergencies happen, or there'll be something we gotta backfill, but it's kind of a combination of both, and it just depends on the scale of what they're doing.
And this price is for, I don't.
Six months.
Six months.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yes, ma'am.
So what do we do when we don't get a bid from anyone?
We start making calls. I mean, because we have to have the material, so, you know. Usually.
I mean, there was a few of them that had no bid.
Right.
On all three, from all three companies. I was just wondering.
Right, no, it happens, and when we need that, then we do a spot check and we price it right there.
Okay.
As for our requirements, we still shop it, but there are times that occasionally we don't, we don't get a bid. Sometimes we can go back to our supplier. If the quantity's very low, it's all structured on, by our procurement processes of what we have to do. Under a certain amount, you know, you can spend it. At next level, you have to get three prices.
Right.
Next level, you have to bid it. So you just look at your chart and know where, you know, where you are in the procurement chain, you know?
Okay. Well, you answered my question, I was about to ask, do you have to get three prices?
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Five D.
Resolution number twenty-four dash forty, a resolution accepting the proposal from Bayard Habits and Associates Incorporated for debris monitoring services and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
This is our contract for hurricane monitoring that we do every year. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Deidre Johnson-Reed and a second by Councilman Marlon Lewis. Any discussion on this item?
So that's them picking up after the storm, right?
Yes. Bayard Habits, that's them monitoring the pickup. In other words, someone else will do the pickup, we'll bring that at another meeting, but they monitor every load, every quantity, they make sure it meets all the requirements, or we don't get, we could stand a chance of not getting paid back. They have never, I mean, they have done a, they have a very good track record of their monitoring.
Okay.
They take pictures of streets. There's been times people have accused us that as we were picking up hurricane debris, we damaged the street. They could go back and pull, pull the photographs and say, I photographed the street before the trucks got on it. I mean, they are, you hire an engineering firm, they are very thorough.
Okay, excellent.
Been doing it for a while.
A long time.
For us.
For us, yes. Questions, comments? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Okay, Bobby.
Resolution number twenty-four dash forty-one, a resolution authorizing the redemption of certain maturities of the outstanding general obligation refunding bonds, series twenty thirteen of the City of New Iberia, State of Louisiana, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Wow, everybody, uh, yeah, it was almost unanimous. I'll say, uh, Mayor Lieutenant Ricky Goncalo and Councilwoman Marlewis. And we have Jason Bagdis to pay off those sewer bonds we promised we'd pay off.
This is, and I told you I'd be back.
Yes, sir. I knew you would come.
Yeah, absolutely. These are sewer bonds that were, um, actually refunded in twenty thirteen. These are, you're able to pay these off now, so it's either wait and pay them off March one of next year and let that interest accrue for another, uh, another twelve, uh, ten months from now, which is really unnecessary, or you can go ahead and pay them off now. And so the money is available. Our suggestion is to go ahead and pay them off now. Come out of the sinking fund that was established to collect those payments.
Yes.
Okay.
Questions, comments? This is what we promised the voters that we would do, that we would pay this off and then reallocate it with the roads and it wouldn't be any more milledage, so that's what we're doing.
Excellent.
So, no questions, comments? Please vote your machines. Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you.
You're dismissed.
I appreciate it. Anything else?
Yeah, right.
It's good to see when a plan comes together.
Yeah.
Long time coming.
Took a long time.
Oh, if, if. Item six A.
Introduction of Special Ordinance Number Twenty Twenty-three dash Twenty Twenty-four dash nineteen, and ordinance amending the budget to reflect funds for Canine Marxian Grant and setting for a public hearing on May seventh, twenty twenty-four.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion, Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed and Councilwoman Brooke Markot. This is a grant, uh, Jane is working on that grant, and it's a Canine grant. Any questions or comments?
And that would be to replace the retiring dog. Is that correct?
Uh, I think it's equipment.
Equipment? I thought it might have been another dog, I'm sorry.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah, it's the goggles.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought, but I wasn't positive.
Well, I seen the retirement.
Yeah.
I thought I could have.
So what is it? I didn't hear.
Night vision goggles.
Okay, gotcha.
Not for the dog.
For the dog.
Any other questions or comments? And please vote your machines. Appreciate it. Seven A.
Ordinance Number Twenty Twenty-four dash thirteen, and ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a ten-foot easement located on a parcel of property owned by Barton and Kelly Romero, located on Lot Two Seventeen, Two Drive, Squirrel, Squirrel Run subdivision, extension number two. All is reviewed and recommended by the New Iberia Planning and Zoning Commission.
They already own the property, so this is just an easement that we don't need for anything. It's kind of landlocked between other properties. They own four lots, I think, so it's not one that we could ever do anything or ever would need to do anything. Uh, and again, they already own the property, so I didn't want anybody to think that they were, we were giving them property. Uh, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Uh, Councilwoman Brooke Markot and Mayor Lieutenant Ricky Goncalo, any discussions or questions?
I said let them do what they wanna do on their property.
And I'd ask you to please vote your machines.
Carport, carport, huh?
Thank you. Item eight.
Kevin Zerang to present monthly budget to actual report for November first, twenty twenty-three through February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Good evening, Kevin. Think I get that inhaling.
That's funny.
Are we putting it up on the screen? No, okay. No, I thought we had in the past.
So we are doing this report from November first, twenty-three, I mean, November first of twenty-two.
I apologize.
November first of twenty-three through February twenty-ninth, it should have been twenty twenty-four. We have four months, we should be at thirty-three percent of our budget. Budgeted revenue for the general fund was twenty-five point three million, actuals is nine point three. We're at thirty-six point six percent of our budget. Expenses, twenty-seven point nine million, we're at nine point five, putting us at thirty-four point ten percent of our budget.
On the police department, it looks like revenue's down and expenses are higher.
Police departments, their revenue is mainly our transfer ends from the other funds. The police department does not, um, it's not established to be a cash generator. So I hold off on the revenue to see if, um, they're needed for their expenses. So the police.
I mean, expenses are thirty-eight. I was, I mean, normally it's not that high.
At thirty-eight point five-six. Uh, the police department has some. Ma'am?
Is it, the revenue's lower because you have not transferred the money?
Correct. Correct. And the expenses are a little higher than usual because of the way we budgeted the cameras.
Okay.
It wasn't split out, one twelfth each month. We pretty much paid, um, ninety percent of it up already.
Okay.
Any other questions? On the general fund? Okay. We'll move on to the nineteen sixty sales tax, budgeted revenue of ten point five million, we're at three point five million, leaving us at thirty-three point sixty-two percent of our revenue. Distribution is a fifteen point four. Budgeted, actuals are three point seven, we're at twenty-four point thirteen percent. Pepperplex Tiff District, budgeted revenue, eight hundred thousand. Budgeted, actual was two eighty-two, putting us at thirty-five point two-four percent of the budget. Expenses, nine sixty-four. Budgeted, actual is two point, is two hundred and nineteen thousand, putting us at twenty-two point sixty-six percent. Policemen and firemen's public safety revenue is four point two million, we're at one point four million, putting us at thirty-three point two-two percent. Distribution, four point two, budgeted, actual is one point one million, putting us at twenty point five-four. At this point, I'm gonna point out, you see, I had your distributions are lower than budgeted. I haven't moved the money yet.
Okay. So do you move it at a certain time, like quarterly? How often do you move it?
Minimum of a quarterly, I'm trying to do it monthly.
Okay. Alright.
Highway fourteen Tiff. Three hundred and fifty-five thousand budgeted revenue, actual is a hundred and two, putting us at twenty-eight point eighty-four percent of the revenue. Distributions, three thousand, we're at eight hundred, leaving us at twenty-five point five-two percent. Spanish Trail, Tiff, thirty-one thousand, budgeted, actual is nine point three thousand, leaving us at twenty-nine point six-nine percent. Distributions, two hundred and eighty-four. I'm just looking at the screen behind you. Two hundred and eighty-four is the distributions, we're at seventy-seven dollars, leaving us at twenty-seven point seventeen percent. Parks and Recreation Fund, budgeted revenue of two point two million. We're at seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, leaving us at thirty-four point nine-five percent. Distribute, or expenses, one point nine million, budgeted, actual, five hundred and twenty thousand, leaving us at twenty-six point seven-eight percent. Pepperplex revenue, three point eight million. Budgeted, actual is eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, leaving us at twenty-two point five-three percent. Expenses, one point seven million, we're at four hundred and sixteen thousand, leaving us at twenty-four point nine-five percent. Excuse me. Public Works, revenue, three point two million. Budgeted, actual is one point seven, leaving us at fifty-one point seven. Distributions or expenses, three point seven million, actual is one point one, leaving us at twenty-eight point six percent. Carbridge Fund, revenue, four point two million, we're at one point four million, leaving us at thirty-three point seventy-six percent. Expenses, four point three million. Budgeted, actual is one point four, leaving us at thirty-two point seventy-two percent. Section eight vouchers, revenue of one point six million, actual is six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, leaving us at forty point four percent of our revenue. Distributions or expenses, one million, one point six million, we're at six hundred and fifteen, putting us at thirty-eight point nine-one percent. Last but not least, wastewater, revenue of seven point four million, actual, one point eight, leaving us at twenty-four point eighty-four percent of revenue. Expenses are five point nine, actuals are one point seven, leaving us at twenty-nine point seventeen percent.
Questions, comments? We tracking, we tracking so far. We're doing good. Thank you. Yeah, alright. Our clerk will be right back. We are heading to discussion items. Nine A is a discussion regarding performance of Pelican's waste and debris. Brooke, wanna start?
Yes, of course.
Okay, good, good. And, and we have the owner and the representative here, as well as some of the crew, uh, the people who really supervise the work, so we, we, all the gangs here.
CEO, Pelican Ways.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I want you to introduce everybody.
Kishony Lewis, she's the district manager. Uh, Joseph, um, is the supervisor here. And then, um, Andrea is my VP of Operation. As you know.
Tommy on the other side.
And, and, yeah, I forgot about Tommy there. I was with Tommy all day yesterday and I still forgot about him. Uh, you know, I know we, we come in here for some performance and problems and, uh, I, I know, uh, I don't think last week, but weeks before, we were having some issues and, and things like that. You know, we get to sometimes problems, either we shorthand it, or I think this problem was we had a lot of employees sick throughout the, this area or throughout the company. Uh, so we, we try to do what, those things. Prior to that, in December, we had a fuel contamination at our pumps. And we had to bring in a bunch of rental trucks, so you may see rental trucks here and there, uh, because we've had a lot of shops go. We had more gas than diesel in the, the fuel tanks, and it's not good for diesel engine, so we've been creating that. So, uh, again, you know, I know we have our faults and we, we do bumps in the road, but we're here to, uh, address those problems.
Good, good.
So I just wanna start by asking you, do you realize that you do have a great dream team behind you, right?
I do.
Like, you have Snook, Kishony, and Tommy that just, they are amazing. They've actually, in my mind, are the reason I waited so long to bring you here, because they're so good. Like, anytime I call them, they answer the call, they're there immediately. Snook has met me on someone's property before. We had a trash can kicked at us, you know, and he just remained professional the whole time. Kishony will respond to my emails any time of the night. I work night shift sometimes. So I'm sitting there and I'm getting the complaints and I'm typing them in and she'll respond, and it's shocking, but it's amazing. And then Mr. Tommy, I don't deal with him as often, but anytime I need him, he definitely is very responsive too. So you, you have the perfect people in place. I, I don't know if it's just the lack of trucks, um, because the yard waste is not getting picked up every week like as stated in the contract. Um, they're doing everything they can. Anytime we complain about nuisance piles, they go and they pick it up as soon as we complain. Um, but we shouldn't have to complain. They should have all the tools that they need to be great, as great as they are. You know, they want to do it for us and, and have everything run orderly, but they can't because they don't have the trucks available and potentially employees in the field as well. I'm not sure if it's both things that are going wrong for them, but, um, I just wanted to praise them, make sure they know they're not the problem at all.
I got a great team. Kishony's been with me for a long time, Andrea's been with me, they were all drivers before. So we end up, had a chance to steal them from the parish and did a great job. And years ago, you know, it's probably almost, uh, eight years ago that I got to, got introduced to Tommy and that was a good, good asset to me. I work very hard. I came from the back of a truck and know where, where that's at. And I'm not gonna sit here and everything's always perfect, because everything's not always perfect, you know? Since twenty twenty, since COVID, parts are harder to come in, new trucks, you know, we, we got trucks on order that they're taking a year, year and a half to come in, because these are special type of trucks. I'd ordered a truck about a year and a half ago. I forgot how you even ordered, that's how long it was. And it showed up at my front door and I says, wow, you know, great, don't get me wrong, but I need to write you a check now. So, uh, and they're, they're getting more expensive too, but, uh, yeah, I mean, look, you know, we, we, we're, we're not perfect and we fail and we do those things, but we are trying to get those things, you know, fixed. And I will address, you know, with, with Shoney and, and Joe and see what we can do. I know spring cleaning's coming up, weather's been nice, been beautiful, people are putting out more trash. So we need to try to get on top of that before the storm season here.
So what do you think you can do differently to maintain the contract as it was written? As far as picking up bulk waste and yard waste every week, like, because that has not happened for months.
Okay. I, I, I mean, I'll, I'll do everything possible to make sure we have the right amount of trucks. Again, you know, um, we do have spare trucks and I do got new trucks coming in to replace some of these trucks as they age. And I've got some replacement trucks coming in. You should see that, probably in the next six months, you're gonna start seeing new trucks roll in. I've had that on order for almost a year now, over a year, so you're gonna see those things. Uh, and I will eventually look at buying larger boom trucks than I've had, so to help keep up with those deals. It just takes a little time. I've ordered some boom trucks almost a year ago for my Biloxi contract, forty-five yard boom trucks. And I just received three of them today and they were supposed to be ready for October of last year. So I can do all I can do with, who's providing me those things, and that's what I'm, I'm doing. But, uh, you know, as, as a local guy and a local owner, is, you know, I try my best to do whatever and provide you the best service you can and deserve and you paid for, so I definitely will get with my team and see what we can do to either ramp up more trucks here to get everything cleaned up and you get back on track.
Okay, and as far as regular trash pickup, um, last several weeks, they've been a day behind. Um, I guess the lack of trucks again, or my, my district is Monday and Tuesday, which I think are probably the busiest days for you guys, so even if you have to move them around, I, I don't know, like split my district into different days, make it spill over, purposely schedule it on maybe Wednesday, somebody. Um, because people are now getting irritated that their trash is still at the road the next day and they don't know when they're gonna pick up.
And, and you're correct about that, and we've talked about this. We've talked about this a long time. We try not to make changes. But if you look at your route, on the routes here, your biggest days are Monday, Tuesday, and then all the other routes, especially Thursday's probably. I think Thursday's your lightest route. So that's one thing that I was getting with Kishony and Andrea and all to relook at mapping that and then get with y'all guys to adjust those route. We've done that in Terrebonne Parish, and I say that because right after Idaho, you had a lot of damage on the south side of the parish, or should I say the east side, depending how you look at the parish, but all the bayous and, and you had a lot of population losing there, but you had a lot of gain on the west side of the parish. So if you're looking at forty-two thousand residents, you're looking at, you know, eighteen trucks running those residents and you, you, you're averaging about fifteen thousand on Monday and then you're averaging seventeen, but on Wednesdays you only have ten thousand. You have to average those out, and that's what we need to do here. I, I think that's our biggest problem. You've seen more growth on one route, or the way the routes were designed at the beginning. What I'm thinking is they might have done another route, you know, went and do some other areas beside these little areas that were near small or how they transitioned. So, but that's, you know, uh, again, we, we look into that and, and we'll begin with y'all guys and, and making those adjustments.
Okay.
I have no problem with the change if they stick to it, you know?
Correct.
I mean, that could be beneficial for both of us, because at least our people would know, you know.
And that was the same thing happened to us.
A finite schedule.
And it was happening to us in, in, in Terrebonne where it was, we couldn't finish because it was just too much. You know, we were picking up twelve hundred homes per truck and it should be like eight hundred homes or something.
My area is very densely populated, so it may very well need to happen. And people, I think, would be okay with the change, as long as they know that their trash is gonna pick up on this day and they don't have to wonder, when's it passing?
Right.
So I think that's definitely a good option.
We're, we're definitely getting back with you and, and get, I wanna make sure we're mapping right. You know, we use our Sir Speedy, we like to get them to do our maps. I've done it for Point C P, I've done it for all of them. They do a really great job here, uh, with maps. I've tried to get it from other places, but I'm gonna tell you, they are top notch as far as getting what you will need there. I'm not saying that because they're here, because I've been using them. I used to use a lot of other people and, and every time I'm asking for something, they really get it on time and redistrict those things, so.
Okay, I think I'm done.
Okay. Yes, sir. I think I'm going around the table. I mean, yes, sir.
I ain't gonna say what y'all thinking. Um, are y'all hiring?
We're always hiring.
Yeah, because I'm getting guys coming to my shop, they're not working, they're asking me, do I know where they're hiring at? I'm hearing about these, uh, employment issues or maybe, is it more employment or more trucks with you guys, or both?
Well. I know it's hard to find people. I'm not gonna say it's not a combination. I mean, we just had a lot of people sick over the last few weeks. And then we had this, this fuel contamination that we had to totally drain these fuel, we had to tank up on the road, we had to get rental trucks in. So I'm not gonna say that was not part of that, that situation. We've got some trucks that just completely engine shot in it because of the gas, too much gas in it. And, you know, do you spend a hundred thousand dollars replacing the engine when you go buy your truck for about two hundred fifty thousand? Because of the age, you know, you're looking at three years old, you don't spend a hundred, go buy a new truck, so it's kinda, kinda takes you that. But we in a battle with that right now with, uh, the company that we dealing with, that, that fuels our deal. Never seen it happen, but it happened. You know, this is the first time in four years that it, it happened, that I've been dealing. Used to get dirty diesel or something like that, you get clock filters, but never, never forty percent of it being gas in your diesel. That's too much for a diesel engine.
But y'all are hiring though.
We are hiring.
Um, so for me, and I'd say this when y'all here and when y'all weren't here, I've been, I feel like we came from Gardens, which was a well-oiled machine. They knew every nook and cranny, you know, every highway, byway, back road, side street, dead end with one house, they knew all of that.
Right.
And I feel like y'all got more growing pains than anything. Growing, and growing, not just growing, but getting used to New Iberia.
The learning curve.
Yeah, the learning curves, thank you, because they still, it took me a while to learn all the streets in my district, and I'm from here. So I know, I've always called y'all, y'all always came through, uh, you know, I, I just can't say that I had to have horrible results. And, uh, like I said, I called Kishony, I called Joe, you know, I, I called people and they let me know, you know, what's going on. And, and I trust them. And normally after I call them, it's resolved for whatever reason. So the way I look at it, the way I see it, I'm serious, and maybe everybody not see it like that. Y'all a new company coming behind a well-oiled machine. Garden was well-oiled, man.
Yeah, Gardens has been here for about twenty years or so, yeah.
You know, so.
Uh, look, I mean, he was a great person and great company to do it. Uh, and mostly his employees stayed with him. That's what was good about. Uh, and mostly his employees stayed with him, that's what was good about it. People was dedicating, they stayed on the job. It's a little different now, you know, uh, everybody's looking for that extra quarter, fifty cents.
And, and.
And, and we pay pretty well, I mean, our drivers make eighty thousand dollars a year, if not more.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's pretty good money, I think.
Now y'all looking for mostly drivers back to employment, mostly drivers off? Back in the truck too?
Yep.
Okay. Cause I, I was at the shop the other day and your truck passed and a guy literally said, man, I wanted it behind. So I thought about Kishon and Joe, I said, I'm gonna send that.
Send them my way, I promise you, they'll get a job pretty quick.
Okay. All right, so like I said, that's.
As long as they pass the truck screen and.
So I, I don't really have a complaint, cause I can't complain, cause I understand business, I'm in business, I'm not in y'all business, I know trash is really.
And look, I think we still have two or three of, of, of Gordy's employees.
Yeah, y'all, I mean, I don't have a whole lot of complaints, I just kinda understand business and I see that, you know, you can't pick up with somebody who was great, you know?
Right.
They have to off and do exactly what they're doing. But I think y'all, but I'm saying that, cause I know y'all wanna get there. And we need y'all to, I mean, we need y'all to get there, you know? Yeah, we need y'all to get there.
Yeah, I want, I wanna give y'all good service, I wanna be here for the long haul, you know? So.
And I mean, I come, I don't, y'all don't know Ms. Peggy Dirac, that's my aunt, I come behind her and she knew how to get stuff done. You know, with trash and all, to be honest, that's what made her famous, getting trash and all of the things that bother people.
Yep.
She was good and I follow her lead, she teach, she teach me the game for the lack of choice, so. And it's not a game, but.
You know, I was here in the sheriff earlier and he talked about the unusual calls they get. You know, and I used to say this, I, I wish I'd have started writing a book about the waste industry because, I mean, the unusual calls we get for different types of service that's not even got to do with garbage. Uh, is, 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 you know, so I imagine what the sheriff's office get, so. I, I really understand that and then I was listening to him, his tax. And it so happened the council lady in Terrebonne posted every parish or what they pay a tax. And y'all really in that low range compared to everybody else that I've seen, so uh, and I'm not, you know, I'm like everybody else, I don't wanna pay more tax, but I want service too, so.
Yep.
But I know garbage is big business and all I'm doing is asking y'all to handle y'all business.
Well, definitely do that.
Thank you, sir. Captain Bruce Hore.
Mark Otte, I need all those numbers. You have, I've called all of y'all. What a number is, I can't get through. I tried all kind of numbers, y'all all give me numbers, city, the mayor, secretary. And man, I can't get through and mostly on the weekend, Friday night, three weeks in a row, Fridays. They call me up. Now, I'm asking at least they get a call back, I don't care if it's Saturday morning.
Yep.
Or send a truck, have a little empty, uh, the truck that goes on weekends from town to town, wherever you have trouble and pick up the trouble spots. Cause that's where you're gonna get the most acclaim, is somebody you skipped. A whole little street you skipped. And I got the call.
Well, we'll make sure one of us.
In a nice way, so I want some phone numbers.
Yep.
You know, please, we can get you. A human. And give us how we can resolve this problem. Because I'm gonna get calls all weekend long, cause that little garbage can sitting in the front, that they got skipped.
Yep.
And the garbage cans y'all are putting back after they all empty them. We don't wanna see them lined up all in the streets, I got some narrow streets, Weeks, Julia, French, we don't wanna see them in the street. Cause the cars haven't, don't have enough room.
Right.
To pass.
Yeah, you got some narrow.
So if they can make a habit of trying to get it even in my neighborhood. Put it in the grass if they can make a habit. Because y'all good, y'all getting good. But uh, I don't wanna get, you know, if I get a call, I want a number I can get through. Fix that where we can call, we're gonna get a human.
We here to fix whatever we can.
We gonna get a human on the phone.
Worse than it gotten.
I feel like it's getting through, you know?
Yeah.
So please, uh, give me some numbers.
I'm writing them down right now for you.
Oh, I love that, Ms. Mark Otte. Thank you. My neighborhood, y'all doing good, we got the cul-de-sacs, go check them. Get a little pick'em-up truck that you go ahead of the game.
Yeah, I know, we, we have, I think you had somebody saying.
Just go in, go on them cul-de-sacs and dead ends.
Yep.
We don't have nothing, don't come down here. You know, and your trash.
Yeah.
Garbage can you have to pass every time.
Yeah.
But that's just ideas we're giving, but I need some numbers, hallelujah. It should work, right?
They will work, yes.
Put one, two, three on there, mother.
I'm sorry. I better get, I better get a human on the phone. Yeah.
You done, Mr. Bruce Hore?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. So look, I, I, I really, I, I understand the, the, the position you guys are in because garbage is not a pretty business. But it's an, it's a gr- it's a business that creates a lot of attention, right? Um, I, you know, I've had good success, you know, with my uh, problem areas and listen, you and me both, I'm in the former business, you ain't gonna do without having problems. So I know, so, and so we just gotta work through those problems and I understand now that you explained to me the situation you're current, I can fully understand why you're having problems.
Right.
So, and, and I applaud you for trying to address it, but, and, and if you up there with the contract saying you're gonna address the problem, I believe you. But you know, and, and.
And let me say, when, when, when we had this problem, especially in this area with the diesel problem. Andrea and a couple of my other supervisors, because I don't wanna take drivers away. Or I could've waited for the company to deliver me some rental trucks. Which was North Alabama, you know, almost into Tennessee. It was snowing, it was freezing. They showed up in the snow that, that the shop was closed with the rental trucks, they had to call. The Uber driver kicked them out and says, I can't just wait here. So, and they didn't bring them extra clothes, we flew them out there and then made them drive their trucks back. So I applaud Andrea and it had the, the other people that brought it there. But I didn't wanna take no drivers from here to send them. But for me to get a driver for, over there to send them, it would've took three or four days and I didn't wanna try to hold up that process of getting trucks on the road, so. I did, but look, you're not cheap them rental trucks, you know, uh.
No, that's the only comment I have, but I did, I did have one question, I know, and we all facing labor issues, but are we equipped if we have to to go with mechanical arms with the containers we have now, if we have, if you have to choose to do that, are we equipped to do that?
Yes, you, you, you're equipped to do that and, and, and I'm gonna tell you this.
And I knew the cans are different, that's why I'm asking.
When we bidded this contract, we had some very new trucks that wasn't that old. So we kinda went and it kinda helps out to pick up some of that stuff. But I, I, I wanna get some new, I got some new trucks ordered and to replace some of those real orders with mechanic, you know, drivers. That, because that's where my labor problem comes in.
Sure.
Is, is the guys on the back. And, and I wish that wasn't the case, but that's where most of my problems are, i- is having that. So I, I would like to see two or three of those fully automated trucks, still having some real orders here to pick up the trash.
Sure.
Cause you wanna get that, the little bitty piles, you want less boom trucks to pick up, those small piles, because it takes time to pick up those little piles. Put down the gears and pick them up. So hopefully come September, October, you're gonna probably start seeing some of those and, and I was gonna get with the mayor. I'm glad you talked about that because I was gonna get to with the mayor, see if we can add some of those fully automated trucks here. Not all, but some of them.
You know, I, I'm not a professional in the business, but I've, I've been in public service and parish government and city government to know that th- they, they do, they do have their advantages. And, and I think in what I'm seeing, not only in your business, but in my business, everybody, and with the labor issue that we're fighting, I think that would improve the situation on your part tremendously.
When, when I started in the business, uh, back in eighty-three, I guess I started, I say, but the garbage industry, kinda looking at that and looking where it's going at. And the reason I see more and more people going to the fully automated system because of the later problems on the back. And they're going to the full, you know, you even see the McDonald's and you see the kiosks and you see the, you know, because of those issues. Uh, and I always believed that the manual way to pick up garbage was the best way and it's always been the uh, you get the job done, you clean up around, if somebody puts a bag out, puts a different type of can out, you can pick that up. Full automated, it's not like that. You know, it's gotta be that certain type of cart, so.
Thank, thanks for what you guys do and appreciate it and uh, I think the mayor's gonna address the other question I have on contacts, but I'll let him talk about that one.
Well, the only problem I have in my district pretty much is, you know, the yard debris and trash pickup, not the garbage. Um, most of the time, it's on a Thursday, so it, it come, you, you do come on Thursdays. And, and that part is really good, but just a little bit more on uh, the trash. Because sometimes um, it stayed out there a month. Uh, the grass is all brown underneath and then I'll call and you all come. But we shouldn't have to call.
I agree with you, I mean, we don't, that's not the way the contract is and that's not the way we should do it. We should do it right away, get that picked up and address those issues, so.
So that's my only uh, complaint, you know, if we can get that taken care of, I think we'd be doing a whole lot. Y'all would be really doing good, I think, in my opinion.
Thank you.
New technologies coming out in the truck and I've, I've, I've been doing some demos with some, some tablets and other things that's doing, we've been doing it on the front loader. Where we setting these, you put all these addresses in and it takes the drive, especially on front loaders, it takes all the driver. Instead of them driving around, it takes them exactly to each address. Not saying it will be good on the residential, because you gotta go down the street, come back up the street and pick it up, but technology's come a long way. Of course, that being technology, you gotta have a mechanic that's gotta have a computer, if a truck goes down, he's gotta regen it with a computer, the truck, so. Those are, those are the biggest problem in this type of industry you're facing is the regen systems on those trucks. The stop and go on those trucks, regens weren't really built for the stop and go, they were built for over the road. And you just trying to take that same deal and, because you gotta stop and it takes you about twenty minutes to two hours to regen a truck. Uh, otherwise it go in derate mode and it gets on a hook. And it's gotta go to the shop.
Sid?
Yes, ma'am.
So um, I haven't had any problems with trash pickup, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, you guys do a great job. Sometimes my trash can will sit out there till late, but when I get up in the morning, it's empty, it's, you know, at the curb, I just have to take it to the back. Biggest issue is like with uh, Councilwoman Ledbetter says, it's on the trash pickup. Sometimes they'll miss some of the streets that um, they have to back into because it's a dead end street. And so then I'll get a lot of complaints. Um, and then a couple of times I've had people call me say that your drivers told them that there is one truck for all of New Iberia and so that freaks them out. And it's on Facebook and so they're very upset about that and why would your city, the city have somebody with just one truck? And I'm like, that's not accurate. Um, I said, there may be a truck down right now, but they have more than one truck that's assigned to um, New Iberia.
Right.
So you might wanna just educate your people that be careful about what they say to the residents because that leaves you guys looking, you know, in a bad light and I'm trying to fix it, but you know, they believe the driver over me, because they think, oh, you just don't wanna deal with it.
I, I, you're correct, I mean, one driver can say something and it's, or somebody can say something, it's a social media.
Exactly.
It's, it's lasting, so.
But I'm like a Councilman Lewis, I recognize the fact this is a new contract and there're gonna be hiccups. This is our hiccup, we just have to figure out how to work together to try and solve the problem.
Right.
But, I mean, all in all, I think you guys are doing a great job and, and like everyone else said, your people are very, very responsive. Um, love working with them, love working with Tommy, you guys have been great, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, let's remember that we're just a messenger.
I know.
There might be one person calling, but we're just the messenger. And uh, I've been up here now twenty-one years and the most calls I ever got was about garbage. And um, you know, Garden did have a, a well machine going. Um, yeah, I, I operate, I, I represent the north side of the bayou. A lot of these people retired, everything's by the day, by the time. It's amazing. They just sit there, my mom lives on that side ninety-five and she looks for the garbage truck or whatever. We have, so I'm just saying the issues that we're receiving and, and, and with Tom and T, I know you have to take care of it. But we're here to tell you the issues. And because you swear they are stealing their children when something's not happening right. It's amazing, I moved more garbage cans in the last three months I've been here than I did probably last twenty years. Is that with them picking them up without the machine, and I'm just speaking for the people I represent, is that they putting a lot of them back in front of the driveway. And so when the elderly people leave to go, they can't get out. They gotta get out their cars, to me it's not a big deal, it's more exercise than I have to do in my life. But for them to get out and move the garbage can is a big deal. And a lot of them put their garbage can next to the driveway. So if they put it back into the driveway, that, to me, honestly, I get a lot of calls on that. Um, and it's not a big deal, but if you don't know a problem, you can't address it.
Yeah, and I, I agree, I mean, look, and I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus here or whatever. I mean, you have supervisors, they gotta follow trucks, they gotta spot check, they can't be behind every truck. But if you notice that my philosophy was and I've been, especially now you got carts, before they had carts, which is people's regular can. But when we do real orders, we, we don't want them to put the carts back where they took them, turn them sideways. And the reason I say sideways is because when people put them out, when you're picking up a real orders, usually they hand them to the road. And then you turn them sideways, that way if you're getting help from other routes, you know those carts were dumped. And then you see all those carts uniform throughout, you know, we do that in Terrebonne, we do it at other areas, if we're not doing here, you know, I'll get with Joe, we'll make sure we're doing it here, but put them back. The worst thing is to put them in front of somebody's mailbox and then put them in the driveway and they gotta get out and it's pouring down raining to move their car, they pissed.
Yeah.
I'd be pissed too, even though I worked for a garbage company.
Yeah.
You saying that uh, wears, is a time, a- a- and I always say that, you know, because every driver, you know, you gotta constantly preach with them and I'm not trying to take up for anybody is, they wanna change their route. They don't tell nobody, they don't tell any supervisor. But look, if you, a- and I wanna use this, I don't wanna use street name, but if you start from A, go to Z. If you start from Z, go to A. But don't go from A and then go next week and start from Z, cause you confusing the people. The mail people, you know, I know, use it an example because they're a good example. You know that if your mail came at nine o'clock in the morning, you expect it to be there at nine o'clock in the morning. Of course, now I get my, my neighbor's mail now, I get everybody else's mail. But I remember mail people used to be on time.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, and I'm not trying to discredit ourselves, but I'm just saying that almost every day I gotta go deliver two or three of my neighbor's mail that's in my body, I'm sure they get my mail too, but uh, but you're right about that. And my mother-in-law was a big like, oh, y'all not perfect, they didn't put my can back, so I had to hear it when my mother-in-law been in this business.
And um, yeah, we have some subdivisions and, and the, every hour I represent and they're pretty tight on some of their subdivision regulations. Where it's like, you know, they'll call me at ten o'clock in the morning, eleven o'clock, four o'clock in the afternoon. We supposed to pick up trash Monday morning, it's still Monday. You know, it's Monday all day. And sometimes it come later at night, I'm, look, it's Monday, we, we did well, but that's how sometimes some people are. And, and so I always throw it out, Monday's still here. So if y'all wanna ride to ten o'clock Monday night, I'm good with it, cause we still Monday, so it makes that.
I'm laughing at that because I had a guy, she can tell you, he calls me where the route begins, one route begins, one route ends, matter of fact, his house where the route ends, one of his, other route ends. But if he sees the other truck picking up, he calls me and it's Tuesday. And, and it got to a point where every Tuesday about one o'clock, he was calling me, I said, look, when your garbage not picked up on Wednesday, call me.
And, and something else, I'm just gonna tell you, cause I, I, I've been overwhelmed by it. Is a garbage can, your garbage is in it, and the garbage can is a can, you look at it. Debris in front of their house. And, and it just, they see that every day and it really gets them, I don't care if it's a pile, a small pile, big pile. I, I'm telling you truth, I, I have a dumpster in my office and if it's a little pile, I'll go pick it up. It, it's just not worth me, you know, making it happen, but I remember.
Those little piles should be picked up with the real order trucks.
Yeah, and Gardens used to have um, like a spotter, I think, a little truck would go around and see, cause one street might, and I had no debris, the next one might had three. And I don't know if they picked them up, what they did, but they would kinda scope the area out before they picked it up. Uh, but a lot of people in the district I represent is on schedules. And if they could cut the grass on a Thursday, they expect the branches that had to picked up, you know, they, they do it upon the schedule of what they have.
Right.
And it's not a big deal, but to them, it's a big deal.
Yeah.
And, and I said, look, matter of fact, I said, we're gonna talk to them and I can just tell y'all, tell them what the problems we having and, and, and and we'll have one more, just one more problem. I know y'all gonna address it. People, and I don't know how you keep a track of it, and I think the mayor probably talked to Tommy T about it, is that. the recycling on my side of Bayou, they recycle. If something happened between me and my wife, it will be because of recycling, not because of no other reason. We somehow, they're watching, and I know some days you have a broken truck, some days they pick up the recycling, and I have pictures of them putting it together with the other trash. And it's becoming an issue, and I think the recycling really came down, I don't think we do a lot of it in New Iberia, I could be wrong. I know the parish doesn't, it used to be big, I don't know if it's affordable to do it anymore, I don't know what the answer is to it. But that is one of the biggest complaints I'm getting. And I'm just representing my district, I'm not talking for the city, I'm just saying the problems that people are calling me about. And, you know, we can tell you the problem, and that's a big step. That we know we have a problem, we could try to address the problem. And that's all I think tonight is about.
Yeah, no, no.
'Cause let me tell you, I have a business fifty-three years, employees, let me tell you, I understand about it. It's tough, but when you have good employees, I don't care how good they are, they can do so much. Equipment, same way, I understand all of that. The end user sometimes does not understand that. But I think we may, might need to look at that again, because I don't know if the money we spending for recyclers is worth it that maybe we can put in another part of our garbage. I don't know that, and I'm not wanting to make that decision, but something has to be changed.
It's kind of a hard deal, and I'm not gonna tell you, recycle is not getting cheap. It's actually, you know, the tonnage is two hundred fifty dollars, and I say tonnage, to send it to a processing fee. You know, like, I remember in ninety-eight when we started, or actually in eighty-eight, when we started recycling with Fush and Edel places, it was eighteen gallon can, you had to separate it. Now it's single stream, they got these unique machines that they have, that they spent ten, twenty million dollars on this place. But it's hard to get rid of it, and once they got it stored, they store so much, and so they charging the end user for it now, where they used to get money off of it, now you don't do that.
We used to like make money off of it.
You used to now, but, you know, I remember as a kid, I'd go pick up a bunch of Coke bottles, make money so I can buy me a candy bar and a drink, well, that's not like that with plastic, it's just too much plastic.
But maybe we might have to look at that, because to me, debris is the most complaints I'm getting, 'cause it's in front of their house. Then it's in a drainage, because it's on the curb, and when we get bad weather, it just goes right down, I'm in the cul-de-sac. So I could just see it going down. And so I just think that's, debris to me is more important than a garbage can, a garbage can float. You know, but I just wanted to give you the few little problems I had, because those problems will continue. You know, the mechanical trucks will help, but the debris, you have to use manual labor. Like you said, when you do the mechanical trucks, then you taking away the opportunity of picking up debris at that same point.
Right, then you gotta add more boom trucks or stuff like that.
You know, so.
But you're right, but that's why I'm saying, you know, we run, you know, a recycle truck and four residential truck, you know, recycle truck on recycle weekend and things, so adding two side loader. And look, like I said, a side loader can pick up about twelve to fifteen hundred homes in an hour, where a rail loader's only gonna pick up about a hundred homes an hour. So that's a huge difference, and that's a lot of speed you can get with that, believe it or not, it's.
And the garbage can goes back to where they put it.
And it goes back to where.
You know, that's, that's.
Because the way these are designed now is, you know, once you pick it up, you press the button, it dumps, and then it just sets it back where it was picked up at. Unless you do like me, first time you learn how to use it after the storm, there, we got a brand-new truck in, and I didn't know, but I I know I needed to get on the road to help us pick up after the storm invited, so I went and drive a truck and knocked a couple of mailboxes down, and, but I still got the people's garbage picked up.
So when you have the garbage can, and you have the bag of debris next to it, say the leaves, and they pick up the garbage can, that bag should stay there.
If they're picking up the garbage can with a fully automated or a rail.
No, just real, like you're doing now.
They should take the bag of leaves with them.
And it's all gonna be put in the same truck?
Yes.
Okay, with that being said, 'cause I had a few arguments about that, why that bag can't be put in the garbage can?
It could be, it just depends on the resident not doing, look, the cans.
Well, these are not too full. You say it again, my wife might be watching. I mean, if they do that, and then they put it in its truck, it's in the same thing.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's, that was worth the whole meeting.
The door's gonna be locked when you get home.
I ain't got supper tonight.
Thank you, and we appreciate what you do, it is hard. And let me tell you, I've been in twenty-one years, almost twenty-two, and it's always been an issue. I don't care if it's with Republic, with Garden, with whoever. And it's probably always will be an issue. But it is to some people, that's, they want their house to be neat, they wanna be clean, and their schedule is a schedule. And I just think we have to throw our concerns out there, because that's what we're here to do.
No, I agree with you, I mean, you get paid for service, and they want the service, so I definitely agree with you, and we're gonna address that.
Okay, well, I'm gonna wrap up. What I have, yeah, sorry, I get a turn. What I have is I hear from every councilperson, they send me the problems. First of all, you got a great staff, your administrative staff, the people in this room bust their butt for you and for our citizens, and really try to address all the issues. I'm not saying they succeed all the time because of all the factors we've talked about, but you got some great people in this room, and I'm sure you got some great drivers and some great people in your whole company. But I get the list of complaints, my office gets a lot of complaints. The one disconnect we have is all these phone numbers that we've shared, it's really, and in the beginning it did, it's really supposed to go through my office, 'cause I'm supposed to track it, because I'm supposed to penalize you. And one thing that is broken in our system is, and no offense to anybody, but all the calling of these guys in the room direct, you bypassing me to be able to find them, because I don't hear about them all. What I hear about is the ones that are three weeks old, and the grass is dead underneath it, the one that's been there for a month, the tires that haven't gotten, 'cause you can pick up five tires per residence, the five tires that don't get picked up, the stuff that's been there on your street and you tell me about, it's been there for two months, you know. That's usually when the council really calls me, and I call Tommy, and I try to stay and deal with Tommy, and they don't call anybody, and I can, I have their numbers. I get an email or a text that shows me where they are, and, you know, we missed this, or we got ten percent left tomorrow because they didn't finish the route, I keep track of all of that. But I try to deal with Tommy, so he knows the issues, he knows what's going on, and I really don't call the other staff members direct. And the reason is why is that I think we should all be tracking it. So one of the things we do have to kinda tighten up on is you need to call Amber, I don't care if you call them direct, if you're getting results. But some kinda way, you need to send that in, because there will come a time, I am like most of the council members had said, really all of us, you have some growing pains, I see you're trying to address the issues, you're here tonight, so we haven't fined you. But it's a long contract, okay? And too much more of this, then they're gonna quit calling you people, and they're only gonna call the city, and the fines are coming. And I really didn't wanna do that to you, because I see you trying, and I see the growing pains, and I hear the, you know, the problems you've had. And, you know, we have staff issues here at the city, you know, I have staff issues at my construction company, I mean, you know, we all fight that. So between that and the equipment breakdowns, I totally understand, but we, as a council, and, you know, are gonna have to tighten up and start documenting all the calls. On the flip side, I call your people, I call through Tommy, and I watch him contact, you know, the rest of your staff, and you do deal with the issues. There hasn't been almost anything that I called and said, man, we gotta get some relief, you know, councilperson, whoever, is just getting a lot of heat, we gotta get that picked up, it gets picked up. And for that, I applaud you. The debris is the worst thing, and it is where we have issues, and, you know, pictures that people send me, two weeks in a row, three weeks in a row, hey, it didn't get picked up, I didn't say it was a great big pile, I didn't say sometime it's not in a weird location, that it's a house that I had to go ride three times before I could find it, and I've lived here my whole life. So sometimes it's the oddball piece, or it's not directly put, you know, there's been times that it's not put right where it should be, or for some reason it got put across the street on an empty lot, and one of the biggest things that we're constantly having to communicate is that your contract is by household, it's not by lot. And so when things get put, I don't really want in front of my house, 'cause I have a party next week, and it gets put across the street, and then I find about it, about it three weeks later, it really wasn't put in the right place. You know, it needs to be in front of the house.
And look, I'm not saying that, it may not be legit, we may still own that pile.
Right.
But sometimes this question, and you're right, there's, you know, sometimes people put it on their tree, and you can't get that boom, or you'll break their tree, and then they want you to pay for their broken branch or something like that. But those things should really report it, and should be notified to the city, why we didn't do those things, and it should be documented. So there's no excuse that if we didn't pick it up, they should have a documentation why we didn't pick it up. I've seen where people put trash on top of a water meter, and we pull the whole water meter out. Or gas meter, I've done that. Thank God we didn't explode, but we've done it many a times.
No, so like I said, we all see the issues, we all work as a team, we do very well together. You know, we just gotta keep working toward, you know, perfecting what you do. I do think that some side loaders would greatly help, because then you'd have a combination of labor, boots on the ground, and equipment. And I do think, I do love the idea, because, you know, every one of these complaints, they put the can in my driveway, they missed my spot, they, you know, whatever. You know, we all hear all of those, so I am hopeful that the reason I wanted y'all to come tonight, and the reason we had a discussion, Brooke put it on the agenda, it was long overdue, but I think that you can't fix the problems if you don't know about the problems. But your people do, and they work really hard, you know, and I think you get them the assets they need, you definitely have the right team. So with the assets that they need, I think we can clear a lot of this up.
Yeah, you're correct, and I was looking at that over the last, I'll say, three, four months ago, because I called to see about rail loaders, and I said, you know what, most of these places that we picking up used to be side loaders, we got the right cans. Let's try, instead of, let's start replacing them somewhat with them side loaders. And it would be more efficient, I mean, you wouldn't believe how, when we have a side loader down in Point Capi, and we have to run a rail loader, how much slower it is, and we much late on the route than. So when you look at, and I'm just saying that when you're looking at them having four side loaders and you have four rail loaders, it's gonna take you more time to pick it up, but you're picking up trash too along the way, I'm not saying that you're not, but I think that's the way to go, and that's the way we wanna go with this.
And I do like the idea of reworking your routes, and I think that as long as you can stay consistent, breaking some of those routes up, that to those lighter days, I think our citizens will appreciate that, and once they realize and get, there'll be a little bit of rhythm adjustment for them to get in the right day, and, you know, that'll be an issue for a little while, but I think once we, that settles, you know, we would be more efficient. And don't ever change the cans, I don't ever wanna have to go through that can thing again. That was the worst thing.
It's not as bad as you think, and again, we try to keep the same routes, because we don't wanna confuse people. Route, you know, Point Capi went there once a week, we had to change all these routes, and it really confused, especially doing once a week. Then they decided to go back twice a week, so we had to go back and change all the routes again, within three months.
Good, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, our last item, nine B., Madam Clerk.
Oh, discussion regarding the American Rescue Plan Act project entitled Business Development Grants.
Okay, what we're trying to do, this is the time that our ARPA funds, before the end of this year, need to be committed. We don't have to spend them till the end of twenty-six, but we need them committed. So a lot of these programs that we all adopted and put together, it's time to start hitting. So this first one is our Business Development Grants. So we have a list of, and it's a discussion tonight, it will come back to vote on, you, in your packet. So we're just thinking that, you know, these grants are three thousand dollars apiece, we have a total of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we're starting to define and need your input, who would be eligible. So disadvantaged businesses, women-owned businesses, you know, we are trying to find businesses that have been in business for a year, all right? We're trying to make it meaningful, we're not asking, we don't wanna pay utility bill. You know, we would like to pay for something, we even have a list of what we think would be eligible, you know, from accessibility grants, equipment, marketing, operation strategies, you know, some physical improvements, sustainability upgrades, so we're trying to find areas, and then it's gonna be a competition in a way. I don't know that we can fund every one, and we are gonna have to look at these, you know, in other words, if we get a three thousand dollars apiece, that's, you know, if we get a hundred of them, you know, we can't do them, so we can do fifty. So we're gonna have to look at the applications and pick the ones that we feel will do the most good to help these small businesses, 'cause you could have somebody who's working out of their house for the last year, if it's approved, they have to be licensed, they have to have an occupational license, so that's only like if it's a home-based business that is approved. If it's not, or it's a small commercial business that needs to grow, or has some opportunity, well, again, this is what we set this money aside. And I'll be bringing one of these to every meeting. You know, we have the scholarships that we wanna give to go to trade school, to send kids who are not gonna go to college, who's gonna go to, you know, trade school, if you will, or, you know, college. So we're gonna bring those, we have the one block at a time that we'll be bringing, so we're gonna flesh out the rules for it. So what my hope is, over the next three or four months, we bring one of these at a time, and they'll be kind of, you know, you'll be doing your homework on them, while we're voting on one, you'll be looking at another. But my goal is over the next three or four months, that all of these programs, we have the neighborhood associations that will each be getting sixty thousand dollars. And remember, for all of these, the weird part and the work that we have not fleshed out, we have to spend the money. In other words, because of our procurements, and because these are federal dollars, and by the way that we agreed to take these ARPA funds, we're not writing anybody a check for three thousand dollars. We will have to do fifty little projects, which is gonna be nuts, but there's no way to just say, here's your money, I hope you do what you're supposed to do. We have to report on that, so they have to do. And, you know, one of the issues is, do we do fifty three thousand dollars, or do we up it a little bit? Because we've been looking at the mechanics of, we wanna help as many people as we can, but I don't have a bigger staff, you know, so.
Three thousand dollars don't go for.
That's one of the things we have to talk about, you know, my initial thing was, yeah, let's help as many people as we can. Now, you know, when I'm thinking about the mechanics of it, you know, we have to do that. We will have to purchase, we will have to do everything, because they can't, I can't, I can't say in all certainty, I gave you three thousand dollars and you spent it where you're supposed to spend it, I mean, we can't lie on the ARPA report.
Can we get them to turn in receipts?
We're gonna have to think, and that's kinda why we're doing this, we're gonna have to think of a process, but I don't wanna get in a situation where they turn a receipt, it's something they can't, they weren't supposed to do. In other words, it has to end at some point, this is a very ambitious program, as all of the ones that are coming are. But we can't put ourselves in a spot where we have to be the police, and I have two assistants, and a clerk who does all kinda stuff besides being a clerk. I can't have it where all of a sudden my staff is running around to find fifteen hundred dollars that somebody didn't spend correctly. And then what do you do? You know, if they're a very small business, you know, what's my recourse? So we are gonna have to think about it, but it's all good projects, and it's all stuff that can really help our community, I mean, who doesn't want see some kids go and learn to be an electrician? Who doesn't want to take half a million dollars and clean up blight in our community? Who doesn't wanna take a million dollars and say, we're gonna do X amount of houses and those renovations that we agreed on that we could do at the very beginning? Same thing with this, who does not wanna help, you know, a fledgling business? So this is my first stab at, with a lot of help. Thank you, Lanny. That we put this packet together, it's not finished, it's not complete, this is, and this is the first one. So I'm asking you to look at them, and then we'll have, you know, other discussions, and then once we have something that we think is fleshed out, I'm gonna bring it back for you to vote on it, because that way, we are all on the same team, and we've all approved, and I've had input, you know, what we're trying to do, because it's huge, I mean, it's, we are spending, you know, probably a million and a half dollars plus that is, that's going, maybe almost two million, that is going back into the community, to the people that need it the most, and that can do the most good. So that's kinda my spiel, I'll open it up for comments and questions, and like I said, we're not done with this, this is just to kinda introduce it. Yes, sir.
So the criteria is a criteria that you're making, they have to meet?
We are making, yes, sir, we, 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 as a council, we put this out here as a discussion to say, let's start talking about the criteria, where I knew I had a problem already, that, I don't know how I'm gonna micromanage fifty little projects, but yes, sir, the goal is for us to come up with the criteria.
So, so it could be for new business or existing business?
Well, we had said that it needs to be an existing business, because again, if you haven't been in business for a year, you don't have any track record. If I just hand you money and say, go, we might never see a. If I just hand you money and say, go, we, we might never see a, a, a result. So we had talked about it and I've been working with some council members kinda discussing these things and bouncing it off. We think it needs to be a business that's been in business for a year.
So it's more about enhancing your business to grow your business, not to operate your business?
Correct, correct. I don't wanna pay somebody's utility bill, that's not
Or the insurance or whatever.
What's that?
Not like insurance.
Right.
Mostly to enhance their business with maybe a sign or, or advertisement or
Sign, advertisement, marketing, uh, you know, uh,
Programs.
Programs, yeah, just stuff that, that would enhance their business. So what we're looking for is people
Training.
We're looking for people who are succeeding at their business, but it's very small, it's very, you know, they've already fought the battle uphill because, you know, they're, they're a small business or a disadvantaged business, uh, you know. Uh, I want to help them and I, and we changed the rules to make it all over town so that we could help, you know, whoever fits the bill. Um, they're gonna have to prove they fit the bill as well, you know? Uh, uh, we're not looking, if you are a, uh, this is to start those fledgling and those struggling businesses that are making it, but, you know, need some help. I'm not looking to, you know, give three thousand dollars or whatever number we come up to, to a Fortune five hundred company, that's not what we're trying to do.
But you, you, you talking about rebating them the money after they spend it? And prove that the money is spent well, or giving it to them and hope they spend it right?
We're not doing either, sir. It would be, we, we would end up, that's why we might have to up the rate a little bit, we would end up spending the money. So I don't know that I can handle fifty trans, fifty three thousand dollar transactions.
Yeah, that might be too much, you might have to change that because
I think, I think first thing, Lainey and I talked about it today in length and we were like, yeah.
Five thousand for thirty.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, because I only have
You wanna make it work, you wanna make it
And also, you can't buy much for three thousand dollars.
And you can't have fifty different kinds of projects, it'll drive you crazy.
Right, well, that's what we have determined.
Yeah, I think the categories have to be simplified, cause there's a lot of, you know, the harvest is plentiful, but the labor's a few, right? I mean, you, you got a lot of need out there.
We do.
You know, it's not like you lack need, but
Yeah, like I said, these were just examples. I do think we're gonna whittle this down.
But if, if all options are on the table, people are gonna go nuts.
Yes.
Absolutely nuts.
Agreed.
Of course, you gotta, and you gotta make the rules before the game starts.
That's, that's what we're doing, you know, and I have to have the money committed by the end of the year of who's doing it, but I have till the end of the year. But we have about five of these projects to, to flesh out, um, so I started with a complicated one.
It's a good problem.
Yeah, it is a good problem a- and, and the need is there and it's gonna be something good to do. I mean, we're gonna, when we get through this year of all this hard work, by twenty-six, when we finish this, we're gonna have really done some things that I haven't seen government do.
So
Yes, ma'am.
You have decided to kinda go away from maybe having them attend some classes or some seminars and then qualify for it at the end?
It, it, yeah, I, I don't know if that's gonna, I, I think we're gonna run out of time.
Okay.
Um, you know, I'm not, I didn't really decide yes or no, but I do think, you know, we're just starting to realize in the mountain, we're trying to climb.
Okay, and so what, what, and I know Lainey probably is more familiar with this, but Lainey, so what is the, the rule for ARPA? How much documentation would we need?
You have to basically have like a legally binding something that says, we're gonna spend the money on this.
And then proof you did it.
Right.
And that's why, just like with the neighborhood associations, we decided they'll pick a project, we'll do the project and, and pay for it. But that way we know, cause it's, it's a binding thing and when you break it down to smaller and smaller increments, even at five thousand dollars and you're helping somebody who really needs the help, you're gonna crush them if they don't succeed and, and, and you go lean on them and say, you didn't spend it the right way, I need it back.
No.
That would be a disaster.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things you could do is make each person come in with a bid, like a, you know, the proposal, what they wanna do.
Oh, they are gonna have to do some work.
With a bid, and then you write the check to the company that they selected and that way you know it's paid for.
That's kinda what we're thinking.
And you got that proposal as your documentation.
But they need to do the legwork. In other words, if they're, nothing's, everything's free, but nothing's free. In other words, if we're gonna do that, uh, they, they need to do the business plan and come up with exactly what you're saying.
Yeah.
All of the steps to procure it, or they're not gonna get it. Yes, sir.
So, uh, you know, just listening to the comments, I think, I think this council will come up with some good ideas and good thoughts, but, but my, you, you made, you said, you know, we're gonna give this money to struggling businesses, I, I, I don't wanna lose sight of the businesses that are successful. Cause I think I, I don't wanna penalize the businesses that are successful.
I just really admit they struggled to get there.
No, no, no.
You're right, they can't be, I'm gonna go bankrupt after giving them five thousand dollars.
No, but I wanna make sure that, that, that businesses that, small businesses that are successful still have the opportunity to apply for whatever number we come up with because they have worked hard and put the ste- sweat and tears into what they want to achieve their goal. It's not just disadvantages or struggling businesses. I think the city has a, a wealth of both of those kinda businesses. So we need to keep that door open, for sure.
But I think it is disadvantages, it is disadvantage.
It is, that's what the ARPA money is for.
You gotta use it on disadvantage.
All right, it doesn't say it in here.
We'll find out.
So ARPA, I, I thought the ARPA funds were for disadvantaged marginalized communities.
There is a whole section on it and when we did vote on the ARPA package, we did put that it would be
Right.
disadvantaged businesses.
Yes.
We didn't define
What is disadvantaged?
What it was, and we actually broadened the scope a little bit, cause originally we had it that we were doing it at West End, you know, the way we work it is.
Yeah, cause it was West End.
Yeah.
The neighborhood.
Right, right. And then we made it CityWalk, so we will, we have the opportunity to define, you know, how far we wanna go.
Cause a disadvantaged business could just be a woman-owned business.
It could be a business that doesn't get employees too, it could be a, we, we gotta settle too, but I'm saying if we, we set that scope too tight, you know, we're gonna
No, I don't think we, I, I think we're gonna make it broad enough so that we can capture as many people as possible.
Yeah, and it needs to be a citywide program. I think we're gonna have too many and, and some people are not gonna get it, but that's, you know, that's part of it. I mean, that's, we're just gonna make our selections.
So we, we definitely need to, as we, we kinda go through this and we make, you know, put set up all these different categories of what kinda businesses, we do need to come up with what that standard is, like you need to come up with a simple business plan and, uh, you know, what you're gonna use the money for, and, and explanation of what you would use the money for.
I do think we need to narrow it down.
Standard, so everybody gives us the same thing, so it's easier for us to make a decision, right, based on that.
Yeah, do you have some more?
Yeah, I just want, who ultimately is, are you gonna bring these requests in front the council publicly or you're gonna make the decision? How, what you determine, how you determine who wins the grant or not?
If you ask me
I'm asking, I don't know.
It would be like Shark Tank, I would bring, they would come, I've always said that, they would come here and we would decide. That's the ultimate, if you ask me.
I'm fine with it.
Might have to be a special meeting.
Yeah, if there's gonna be
Just for that.
If there's gonna be transparency.
Yeah.
We are spending money while it's money we got from ARPA, but we are spending dollars and giving, awarding people. Uh, if you ask me, it's all, everything we do is public, so I think they've, that, you know, that's the way I would handle it.
You do realize that, and I like the idea and I think that that should be part of, part of what we do, but you're gonna, some people are gonna say, I'm not gonna do that. You know, I'm not going in front of the council, I'm not gonna make it. And if that's the case, then they disqualify.
They disqualify.
No, I think, you know
If that's what y'all would like, that this council would like to do.
We're gonna have a short list that you go through step one and two, and if you don't meet that, you don't just go any further. In other words, we are gonna set the, on all of these things, we're gonna set the parameters on all of them. You look at one block at a time, that's gonna do the houses, you need to own the house. We're, we're not doing landlords' houses, okay? You know, boom, if you don't own it, well then, no offense, you, you, you can't get there.
Right.
Uh, you know, wi- with this one, it's gonna be a requirement, if that's what we choose, you've been in business for a year and whatever other requirements we put in place. If you're not willing to do the legwork or you're not willing to come publicly and say, you know, whatever that dollar amount, if, if it increases to five thousand, I need the five thou- or I want the five thousand dollars for X, Y, Z, if you're not willing to do it, then that's our program, you know? But to me, the more transparency we have, the better, because there's always gonna be somebody who's not gonna make the cut. Uh, I'm not being ugly, but there's always gonna be something that, you know, someone's gonna be disgruntled. Then the only thing you can do when you have a program is do it as transparency, as transparent as you can and say, you know, th- this is the decision we made.
So
Are, are you finished?
I'm finished.
Yes, sir.
And ma'am, this could be a, 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 a meeting that, it doesn't have to be on TV.
Right.
It should be a meeting and it ha- that we can see and, and have our input, but
And we don't even have to do it here. It could be this line. I mean, if you're gonna make it, you know, uh, uh, kind of a competition in a way, and if you're gonna make it, I, I'm not trying to belittle anybody or do anything that's disrespectful, but at the same time, we, we working, we can have some fun, we're giving out a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yep.
So my way of looking at it is you do it to slim and it becomes, you know, almost an event.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
I agree, and I mean, to me, the public should be okay, come in as well.
What's that, ma'am?
We should allow the public to come in if they wanna
Yeah, yeah, everything we do is public, there's nothing we do that, you know, we're not doing anything under a rock.
No, we could, we could put them, we could say, we could have them vote. We could, you know, put it on their phones and let them vote on their phones and no one would know what, who they voted for. We could, I mean
Who votes?
What's that?
The public.
The public, that way we don't have to make the decision.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know about that, I think, I think if we do, yeah.
If it's your decision, it's gotta be open meeting.
Yeah, but, yeah. I mean, ultimately, we are giving away the money. It's a, it's a, it's a weird deal for government to be in. I didn't say it's not fun and I didn't say it's not gonna be useful, but I think we need to make the decision because we're doing it, you know?
Okay.
If you're gonna beat a government with a heart, well, you, you know, you gotta feel it.
Okay.
So like I said, I, I know we can't decide all of this tonight.
Yes, sir. Do you want us to email you our thoughts on this?
Yeah, sure, sure.
How you wanna handle this?
Yes, e- email me, take this and email, yeah.
Email back your thoughts.
Yeah.
And, uh,
Five thousand would be pretty fair.
We can't do fifty projects.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, good.
I was about to say, yeah, we might not do thirty projects.
What am I missing?
For sure, we should agree we go up it.
Yeah, I think so, I think that it's just too many.
Let me share something with y'all that we did a while back when we had Western Business Association, when Southern Mutual was
Yeah.
putting loans out in the community. We couldn't find ten people to get twenty-five thousand dollars each. Had to do, it was a loan, it was, uh,
Interesting.
It was, uh, we, they, Monica Loop came and helped us with the business plan and all of that kinda stuff. People hard to find, fifty is a big number, big number.
Okay, well
Thirty is almost
I think it's too big for what we can handle with my staff.
Well, that's why I said that, it's too big for your staff and it's also, the, again, if you open it up, well, then that was, those loans were for disenfranchised communities as well, so this might be a little better since it's all over the city and it's for disadvantaged businesses.
You know, if we did twenty-five businesses, that'd be six thousand dollars.
Well, I can tell you that the, from the Women in Business event, I've already had ten people asked about the micro loans.
Oh, sure, and that was a good, that was a good event and you had a lot of participation and that was something really good.
So I'm sure those same people are gonna say, wait a minute, y'all giving away a grant, hold on that loan.
You know, what I've taken away is we need a slim choice of categories so that we cut down
This money to pay the grant?
We cut down what we are offering for what reason, and then we cut the number.
And this money needs to be spent by a certain time, right, or given away?
Yeah, I have to commit it, so we have to select before this year is up, let's say it's twenty-five, okay? We gotta select our twenty-five participants this year. We have till the end of twenty-six to spend it, you know? But we have to be committed that here, federal government, this is our plan, this is our twenty-five people that are gonna be in the plan, boom. We have to do that with one block at a time, we have to do that with the demo grant, we have, like I said, four of these. Uh, we have to do that with the, I'm gonna meet with them next week, I think, with, uh, SLCC for the little scholarships we give. So all of this, by the time the year is up, we gotta turn in a report that tells us, you know, who we are partnering with.
Right. A- and I will say that the STEM thing went very well, they have another one coming up.
Oh, it did, it did, no, that, that, that made a mark. Yeah, that made a mark.
Yeah, that money
Now, there was easy, we gave it to one entity, the school board, they put it on.
Yeah.
You know, like I said, these that are, we're really trying to help in the community, you know, I, I am realizing and feel the pressure of how much work this is gonna, you know, gonna be. And if I was only doing one, it'd be fine, but we have four of these, you know, to put together.
So we should probably have them, and I know I'm that tech person, but we should probably have them upload the information first so that we can review it before they come in front of us.
Yes, yes, that's why, that's what this was, uh, Google Doc, and so once we flesh this out, which I can't do without your input, that's exactly what's gonna happen. So that we can weed through, cause there'll be some that we know they don't meet the criteria.
Right, and then we can say you can't.
So that when we come, everybody has a, you know, is on the even playing field of having a chance.
Yeah, and you're measuring one against the other on the same criteria.
Yes.
Maybe we could get a summary or, or information on what the money's restricted for.
Mm-hmm.
You know, cause there's some things that disadvantage the whole community and some things that disadvantage just particular people. You know, so I think we need to figure out what, what's our target here.
Okay.
And, and, and that's gonna depend on what's permitted.
Well, we talking about, um, a small business though. We're not talking about a conglomerate, uh, like say you, that's been in business fifty-three years or a million dollar enterprise, you know, next to you. We're talking about somebody who, who's basically, yeah, you. Struggling, somebody who
I'm feeling a certain way here.
I could use it.
Well, you might be off the council.
That could be, that could be possible. But you know, I think like somebody who has a, um, a business, uh, screening shirts, you know, and it, and it's in their house or whatever and they need a new piece of equipment or something to take it to the next level and, and maybe then get to a building per se or, you know, put a building on the side of the house. Yeah, you know, that kinda thing is what I think we looking for.
Yes.
For them to kinda expand and, and give them something that they need that would help the business thrive a little bit more.
And maybe the twenty cutoff is high, twenty employees?
That's real high.
Oh, I wasn't thinking that big, I was thinking, you know.
Well, it says they have more than twenty.
I know, yeah, we took this
Buy a piece of equipment.
This is our example.
Turn around and sell.
More than twenty, right?
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, you know
But that's too large.
You got
You got some big businesses.
Twenty, twenty people's a pretty big business, right?
Business, that's a big business.
Yeah.
Nah, that needs to be One.
Yeah.
I think bigger difference, you make a bigger difference with smaller businesses.
Yes, and I realize that, that's what I had said earlier, is that I'm not looking
Do we have to monitor this for after? Do we have to monitor it for a period of three for years?
The money's gonna get spent and we're gonna monitor the, how the money was spent and that's the end.
Yeah, that's something we could do with it, once we spend the money.
Yeah, once we spend the money
You know, tracking is, that's more employees, more work for the city, I mean, just like Dan said, say, say we, we, we give Barlow five thousand, he buys a barber chair, then next year he sells it. I mean, I mean, just
I mean, we, we don't have to care though.
No, I'm just saying, you know, just to make an idea.
Our responsibility ends after
That's what I wanna know, that's what I wanna know.
After we spend the money, our responsibility
Okay, that's
If he decides to sell it, then that's on him.
Oh, man, that's what I wanna know, our responsibility, we don't have to track it for three years.
No, we just gotta spend, we gotta spend it right.
Yes, we do, we do.
And we would have our proof because we have the receipt.
Yeah.
And also, I was listening to Ms. Ledbetter, I think, is, is it a, and let's say we go with six thousand dollars.
Okay.
Max.
Or maybe more.
Look like to me it should be an up two. Cause if one small business just needs a four hundred dollar machine, then we shouldn't exclude that small business.
Or tell them to go shopping.
Right.
I think, I think we said
Like a screen, she made me think of that when she did the T-shirt thing.
Yeah.
And you know, it really depends on how many applies.
Right.
So if you only have ten, you give ten more money, then you can have twenty.
We'd be fifteen thousand, I mean, yeah.
You get from a low to high amount, say five, you know, five dollars to three dollars.
So that I know I'm doing a minimum, a maximum of transactions
Yeah.
of projects, like we call, so, you know.
So one thing, um, when we think about businesses, y'all have to also remember that, you know, there's a lot of online businesses that are not traditional businesses, but they are businesses. And so we shouldn't exclude those type of businesses from getting the funds if they have something that would help to grow their business, like more marketing, whatever. Because a lot of kids are, young people today, they don't make money the traditional way. They have online processes, like they might have some sort of Instagram thing that they do or YouTube channel that they have or whatever. I'm just saying that there's a, yeah, we need to make sure that we understand that, cause young people don't make money the way we did. They don't have little part-time jobs, they do, they go to the social media and make money there. Lots of them, and a lot of money sometimes. Hey, I'm just saying, I, I mean, I know this for a fact.
What about occupational licenses?
Yeah.
We're gonna require those?
We, we had originally put in there that you had to, to, to know that you were a business, you had occupational.
You had to have occupational license.
Well, not necessarily, though, because it could be an online business.
Most, most legitimate online businesses have occupational licenses.
They have, they might have a, they might have an EIN number, because they're registered with the Secretary of State, but they don't necessarily have occupational.
Do they pay taxes?
It depends on what type of business that they have. Like, some people selling on Amazon.
I know somebody that was selling stuff, and they had to go through everything online.
Okay, well, I know that some of the.
You had, you had to be in good standings, tax, everything.
But what if you're a sole proprietor? There's no good standing for a sole proprietor.
You don't have to, you don't, those things don't apply.
Suppose you're a nonprofit.
You can file with the Secretary of State, I mean.
So, suppose you're a nonprofit.
So, we need to flush this out.
You can be, you can be, you can be listed at, with the Secretary of State as a, as a business.
But as a, as a nonprofit.
Yeah.
You're listed as a nonprofit.
Secretary of State, if you listed a nonprofit profit, if you listed the Secretary of State, then you legit.
Yeah.
Cause you gotta follow the law.
And you may or may not have a tax on EIN.
No.
You would.
Well, you, some don't.
It's just, that, this is why you gave it to us.
Yeah, y'all doing exactly what, as y'all always, exactly what I was hoping of. Put your heads in the game, because it's, it's complicated.
No, it is.
So, give us a deadline. Okay, give us a deadline. When you need, when you need the information, ma'am?
Uh, probably soon, because we're talking May.
Yeah, I would like to move on to the next one. So, we, our next meeting's in three weeks, cause we got like a bye week, you know, we got an extra week. So, uh, in three weeks, between now and three weeks for the next meeting, I would like some email input.
So, on the next agenda, you wanna have another discussion item with changes?
Yeah, I'm gonna put it on there.
Actually, it's to be on the agenda to vote for, right?
I'll put it on introduction.
Introduction.
Alright.
So, in three weeks, this one would get introduced, and then I'm gonna bring you another one that we'll do, you know, two, three weeks later.
That's enough time.
So, are you gonna eh, send any emails of the suggestions of the council prior to the meeting?
Yeah, what I'm gonna do is take all y'all's sug, if it's okay with y'all.
Yeah.
I'm gonna take all your suggestions, and Lainey and I are gonna put them all together and kick it around, I'll kick it around with the rest of my staff, and I'm gonna come up with a new version. Now, I can't, I promise you that I'm gonna fit every one of your ideas, but you know.
Cause there'll be duplicates on there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But I will try to get them all in where they were, and if they conflict with each other, I'm gonna pick one. I mean, that's my job. So, I'm gonna come back with a document that is a, uh, you know, I'll be influenced by every one of yours. I can't say that I'll use every one of yours. And I'll put together a new document and bring it to the meeting to introduce. And then we do our game like we always do. What do we do? We talk about it, we modify, we sit here and run our process, and we end up with something even better when we leave.
So, two, two questions. One, can we get a soft copy of this? Electronic copy?
Sure.
Okay, um, so, cause it's easier to kinda go in and, and, okay. Um, second question is, can we get your updated version before the meeting, so we have time to look at it?
Oh, definitely, definitely, definitely. Yeah, cause I got something in the address.
We'll be in your packet for sure.
That you're gonna be screaming. I got something we'd be screaming about, you know, we, or I might have something that conflicts.
Yeah.
I might have two different council people, which is usually the case, with very strong opinions, and I gotta figure out what I'm gonna do.
I'm not gonna change this, too.
I can't believe that.
No way.
So, maybe.
Have, have an occupational license, cause it don't take long to get one.
No.
I don't know that that has to be a requirement, though.
I think it should be.
But it could be.
I think it should be.
It doesn't, it depends on what kinda business. I mean, I'll look at the tech businesses, and I'll come back with some more information. Because if they don't have to have one, then we shouldn't make that a requirement.
But, I mean.
But they don't cost much.
That, that's the point I'm making. They don't, they don't cost much, and they don't take time.
Okay, but then if I, my business has been going for a year, and I go get an occupational license, it said I got it yesterday. I don't look like a qualified business for this program.
No, but we gonna, we gonna, we gonna make you qualify. Cause you're approved by EIN.
Yeah.
So, so if you don't have occupational license, but you've been in business.
We're gonna sole proprietor, I don't have either one of those.
But, so, I don't, sole proprietors don't have to have.
I don't like to use the hammer.
Oh, he about to rap on y'all.
They do, if they in business.
Sole proprietor, I'm a sole proprietor.
The reason I'm asking the question is, when we got the COVID grant stuff coming through, half of those people on that list were n, said they had businesses in New Iberia, and they didn't have licenses, right?
That's why it should have, exactly what you said.
Occupational license is, quote-unquote, a business license.
Part of what we're doing is trying to help the businesses that are in New Iberia to help New Iberia.
That's the other thing, remember, we gotta make sure we say, this thing is still on, this is within the city of New Iberia. This is not a parish.
No, this is, this, we want the businesses in the city, but at the same time, we want the businesses that help the city and that produce something that's good for the city. You know, and if you're just doing business in Europe on the internet, you're not really doing, I'm not being ugly, and, and I know that's how young people make their money. You're not doing anything that's part of our community.
Well, you don't know that, cause, you know, I might be watching those videos, I'm, maybe I'm learning something from that person. I, I just feel like if the bi, if the business is within the city limits, then it should be considered. We might not pick it, but if it's within the city limits, they should have an opportunity to apply, because it is a business. I mean, so what if my product is being sold somewhere else? I'm spending my money in New Iberia. I'm, I'm paying those taxes in New Iberia.
Oh, we getting into weeds now.
I'm just saying. No, you don't just.
We getting into weeds now.
No, no, that's not the, what I'm saying is that you shouldn't say, because my business, uh, my target audience is not necessarily in the city of New Iberia, or if, if it's in Mississippi, or if it's in Jamaica, that my business is legitimate, because my, whatever proceeds I'm getting revenue from that business, I'm spending in New Iberia.
Same with my job. Same with my job. Every proceed I get, I spend in New Iberia.
That's my point. So, why would I?
Getting into the weeds. We're talking about, all I'm talking about is occupational license.
Well, Freddie and I were talking about something different.
No, no, but I'm talking about occupational license.
I know, but Freddie and I were talking about something different.
Yeah, we having too many conversations.
Well, that's why we haven't, our little suggestions we could send there.
That's exactly right.
Cause if you can prove you in business, without occupational license, then you, you qualify for that, yeah, and just get your occupational license.
So, I get that. You and I are on the same page. What Freddie and I were talking about, Freddie made a comment about, if you're selling to people in Europe.
Oh, yeah, I heard.
That, you know, that's not necessarily helping New Iberia, but that's not fair, because yes, it is helping New Iberia, cause my revenue's being spent in New Iberia. So, I just don't wanna so, to say those people don't qualify.
Okay, uh, point taken.
Okay. I, I'm sorry, I was just trying to explain more of why I was saying what I was saying.
But I understand, but they're gonna only be able to brag on their product and their work in Europe.
That's not true.
It's all good, man, it's all good. Maybe that wasn't the best example, but we'll, uh, we'll get there. We'll get there, get no more examples. Alright, thank y'all. You know, it's been a long meeting, uh.
Again.
Again.
I miss my.
Uh, council long-term.
Although, these are always ve- very nice when we have a good discussion.
So, Didi, when you were in Europe, it was short.
And I will start with you on council remark.
And, and people were missing me, right?
Right.
Oh, we all missed it.
We were, it was quick, though.
People calling, looking for me.
Those meetings was quick, I had some early dates.
Hey. I ain't thinking about y'all, cause y'all know that ain't gonna stop me.
Uh, uh, no, ma'am, I just wanna, uh, thank, I know the administration been doing so much. It's like every weekend, there's something's happening in New Iberia. At the festival this week, last week, I mean, every weekend, that says a lot. Yeah, I know you have a lot to do, the administration has a lot to do with it, and I wanna thank the, uh, police department. They gotta fulfill their, their weekends to do this. It's just great. I mean, it's amazing. We had someone come in from out of town, visit my wife, and say, do y'all have this every weekend? She just happened to come in when everything was happening. But it is a good thing, and it's a good thing for our economy, cause people go to the stores, people go to the restaurants, and I wanna applaud you, because people can't say, there's nothing to do in New Iberia.
Right.
It might be different than down the road, but there's something to do if you wanna do it. So, I wanna applaud the efforts that you and the effort that the administration puts to make that happen, and to make it happen easy.
It's a community, and it takes all of us, and.
You, you welcome them with, I'm telling you, it's so easy to make it happen, and thank you for doing that, because in the past, we had some issues for anything to do in New Iberia, it wa, it wa, it was hard to do, and you opened that up, and it's really, it's showing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I just would like to say thank you to the mayor for, um, allowing me to take his place in, uh, Aljarran del Atore, Spain. Um, it was an amazing experience. Um, I had a great time. Um, I got to walk in the parades. I, what I did know at the start of this thing was that I was the honored guest. So, um, it was, it was amazing. The people were extremely nice. Um, they were very welcoming. Uh, when I was walking in the parade, people were like, who is that? You know, I'm like the only black person in the parade. So, people just weren't expecting to see me, and so people were looking at me like, who's that? It was actually quite funny, but they were very sweet to me, very welcoming. Our host was amazing. Uh, he planned a very full pa, I mean, the, the agenda for our itinerary was packed. This guy had us doing something until, um, ten, eleven o'clock at night. So, we'd leave at nine in the morning, and, you know, we'd come back to the room long enough to take a shower for the evening event, and then we go to dinner at nine, nine o'clock at night, ten o'clock at night. They don't eat early. One time, we got to the, um, restaurant at eight-thirty, we were the only people in there. By ten o'clock, there's no tables available. They eat late at night. Uh, so, it was, but it was fun. We had a flamenco, um, dance. Uh, they had the, a performance for us. I mean, it was just an amazing experience. I, I'm sorry the mayor missed it, but I hope I did him justice. I really enjoyed myself, so, thank you very much.
You did, you did. All the reports, and everybody said, you know.
We saw your picture, we knew you were there.
It was good, it was good. You did a great job. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Neighborhood Watch is going to be tomorrow night at six o'clock at the Slimen. Come on out. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Well, just, um, just a fruit for thought, I mean, we, we've all voted and, and invested in the new Pepperplex, and I've been out there several times, and it's amazing to see the amount of cars, the amount of activity out there that's packing the facility. It's getting well, well-used, and I'm excited about it. And then for the record, Richard Romero did beat me in the tricycle races this weekend. So, and when he comes, he did beat me, so I participated in the tricycle race. It was a very fun event. Like Dan said, there's always something to do, and, uh, there was no potholes in the circle, Dan. So, it was all good, smooth sailing. Yes, it, it was fun. People enjoyed it, and I think it's a lot to build on in the future for the park.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Don't forget, we got some voting things on the ballot. Uh, please go out and vote. You can vote early this week, I think through Saturday. So, uh, anytime we got a chance to vote, show that we care. Go do it.
Thank you, sir.
I don't re, I don't really don't have a lot, uh, I don't have a lot, so I'll pass.
Thank you.
So, just kinda piggybacking off Mr. Ricky with the Pepperplex, uh, rec ball has started, and, uh, the only complaint I have now is that we need more parking, cause we have so many people involved in a rec ball, which is a good problem to have. But, uh, it's really thriving over there. Um, I'm hoping we can host more tournaments. I've only known of one so far that we hosted and got really good reviews, so it's time to, to get these people coming to the Pepperplex over the weekends. That's it.
Thank you. Been a long meeting, so I'll keep it short. Uh, I enjoyed this meeting very much. We, we continue to do really good work. Um, we did do our first term of the Pepperplex, it was successful. Um, we will be getting additional parking with the next round of of, of money that's coming from the state, from Capital Outlay. We have a new multi-use pavilion, and next to that, we're gonna do, uh, increased parking. Um, so that's coming in the plan. If we're successful to get the money that we've asked for this coming year, if that happens with the new Capital Outlay, we would end up probably doing even more parking, uh, because we realize, which is a good problem to have. But, uh, over time, I think you'll see that project continue. Um, and like I said, it's been a long meeting, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.